All right, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded. We do have two members of the Select Board attending remotely, Mike Marley and Jason Cooter. And the other three members are here in the room in person. And if you could please stand and join me. I would be pleased with flying the United States into the Republic where we wish to stand on issue. We also have a meeting with the Finance Committee as you have a floor.
As of right now, it's just me and Billy remote, so.
Okay.
So I'm expecting more members to join in one, but.
Okay, let me know when we'll pause and let you call your meeting to order as needed. And we also have our Town Administrator Jeremy Stoll joining us remotely. And so I think that we are ready to go. So this is a meeting that is primarily for budget presentations. So we have a number of budget presentations and departments and other organizations here to talk about their budgets. Jeremy, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, certainly. First things first, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. I've got our headphones this time. So yeah, so first of all, thanks everyone and thanks for your flexibility in having me take this remotely. Tonight, we're going to be talking with with Library, the Board of Assessors, and then Parks, Water, Parks Rec, and Highway. We're going to talk jointly with Highway and Parks about a position that addresses needs for both departments. So we'll probably have Highway come up and talk, kind of blend those together. And then Highway's larger presentation will also go through snow and ice. And we'll talk a little bit about budgeting for snow and ice going forward in a, you know, theories on deficit spending and how to raise the deficit. So it's kind of context for tonight. And I believe Library Director Andrew Genrich is in the room to speak with you tonight. So I've had his budget queued up here and ready to go.
Thank you for the great.
So Jeremy, I was telling Elena that I had sent an email to you on Saturday. And the Saturday email actually included a budget which is a little bit less than what you got on the spreadsheet there. And that's because we're only asking for four additional staff hours as opposed to eight.
Okay.
And that would mean that the books number also would change. So at least those are the two, the two lines that changed somewhere.
Ah.
How are you? Oh, good, good.
And then, yeah, if you could, I know, just introduce yourself.
So I'm Andrew Genrich, I'm the Director at the TAF Library, been there for, what, eighteen years? And eighteen very good years, and this year's very good so far. Program numbers are great this year. Our circulation numbers are up this year so far as they were last year. Couple of things that are upcoming for us. We have a feasibility study being done by GRL Architects of the Rectory. Actually, just had them over there today. Who they were seeing taking photographs and measurements of the rectory and the adjoining libraries. That has been made possible by feasibility study on earmark through the state. Upcoming is repaving of the parking lot with Harshaw. That's in the spring this year, hoping late April or May. And then also put a plug in for a big event that's coming for us this year. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Carrot Bowl race. So what we're trying to do, we're hoping to do this year is something called Twenty-Five for Twenty-Five. But we'd like to target twenty-five votes, which we haven't done to this point. We've been close to twenty most of the time. But we're starting to talk it up, hoping that departments will join us this year. Potentially businesses in town will join us and participate in races. A number of things upcoming. Sorry, I'll start.
Yeah, if you don't mind, we have our four FinCom members. We'll call it FinCom, I'll call it FinCom, meeting to order at six thirty-five. So sorry for interrupting.
No, you're good.
Thank you.
So the budget today. Does everybody have the budget proposal that I sent with the summary? I just wanted to double check the figures on that summary. Operational total is one sixty-seven four. On the summary, this will be the last page of document.
Jeremy, did you email that out?
I did earlier, but I'm going to share it right now.
I actually have it, if you want.
Yeah.
If anybody needs.
Send it out for this morning, because I know I saw it and then I had to ask, so that we're gonna.
If anybody needs, I'm gonna get that.
It's like one of our people.
Yep, no problem. So there are budget additions to the salaries line and the maintenance. There are, and let's see, there are a couple of reallocations within the budget. Well, seventeen hundred, excuse me, has been moved from utilities fuel. Five hundred, five hundred of which will go to supplies and twelve hundred to programming. There are a couple of budget lines with required changes, obviously, with three percent cola, the salaries change. And then the books line changes as well because there's a state mandated nineteen percent material expenditure. We are asking this year for four additional part-time library technician hours in the amount of forty-two fifty-one. Expansion of our hours is bold stated in our five-year strategic plan. Not only to increase access to the collection, but to library services and programs. We're currently open thirty hours per week, but there are no morning hours on three weekdays. In survey responses, people told us that hours are inconsistent and we're not open at times that are convenient. Yet all the while, our programming numbers have increased, our circulation numbers have increased. The goal stated in this year's library budget proposals gets to a consistent, logical schedule with adequate morning and evening hours which better serves the needs of our patrons. It's not something that's going to happen all at once. We're looking at this incrementally. Should we be able to get the four hours? I have four available hours currently in the existing budget, which allows us to advertise hopefully for an eight-hour a week library technician position. That will allow us to staff the downstairs desk on Monday. Upstairs, myself and staff would be able to staff the desk upstairs on Monday, so that we can be open ten to three. That individual would also cover three hours on Tuesday that are currently being covered by senior abatement employees. Lower our senior abatement employees, they've done a wonderful job, but their hours are finite. And we need a workable permanent solution to covering those problems. I did, let's see. So anyway, at the four available hours, excuse me, the four available hours that we have are hours that were reallocated from operations in FY twenty-five to our salaries budget. We've used those hours on occasion this year, but not consistently. My staff, as wonderful as they are, there are a couple of, actually, only two or three of them that have two and three jobs. So the flexibility is an issue there. Another individual who's in the process of almost reducing their hours because they're getting older and looking in retirement. So that's why I felt that this stage would be best for us to look at another library technician position that would be able to cover the Monday and Tuesday and potentially also spell individuals on other days, potentially in the weekend as well. Even though we have weekend coverage to spell those individuals on the weekend, I think we'll be able to. I'll just go down through the summary very quickly. As I mentioned, contracted services at fifteen thousand five hundred, that's level funded. Telephone at two thousand two hundred is also level funded. Utilities, lights and fuel, as I mentioned, seventeen hundred was reallocated from there. Five hundred of which went into supplies at eleven six fifty. Building maintenance, we've asked for an additional five thousand dollars. The five thousand dollars would be to address the Carrot House Foundation that's over at the library behind the rectory. Currently, there are three exposed sides and they have a drop on every side. So we're concerned about security and safety on that. And then potentially maybe in a new usable space, we can, I think, you know, tables, chairs, paper tables, those sorts of things. We could actually make it a nice sort of inviting space for people as long as we secure it, make sure that it's not a danger to anyone. In the books line, that books line goes up twenty-six hundred. I may have made a small mistake in the budget proposal and I said in an area that was thirty-three hundred, it's actually twenty-six hundred. I've issued one with books line. That's because of the municipal expenditure requirement. Meetings and dues is also low funded. And library programming goes up twelve hundred to twenty-five thousand one hundred. Staff salaries altogether, which means forty hours of the director's salary, thirty hours of the children's salary, and then fifty-seven and a half hours for library technicians. That would include the new library technician at eight hours. The amount requested there is one hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred. Total budget is three hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred, which is eleven thousand nine hundred over this year's budget. And that's my.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrew?
I got a couple, just one, the, what's the, in the salary line that I had, and you talked about hours, technicians plural. What's your head count in that, or what kind of mix of full-time, part-time do you have?
So we have, right now, we have six, let me think here, myself and the children's librarian and five library technicians. All the library technicians are part-time, primarily eleven hours or under. Myself and the children's librarian are the only full-time staff.
Are you just looking to get another four hours of technician?
Right, because we have, like I said, the four available hours that we allocated for this one this year. Yes, which I have need considered forty-two fifty.
And that's to be split amongst all the part-time technicians that we got?
No, it's to bring in somebody new.
Okay.
Yeah, with the four hours I have, the four additional hours would allow us to pursue an eight-hour a week position. And as I said, my, the staff is limited in terms of what they're able to cover on a weekly basis. So it seemed like now would be the best time for us to look to have an additional person.
And you also mentioned the goal of having some Monday hours because currently the library is closed on Monday.
Exactly.
So this would be.
Right, so we're.
Schedule a fair amount.
Exactly, yeah, so we're closed Monday mornings and Friday mornings and Friday mornings. That's what allows us to address Monday. Doesn't mean that in the future we won't try to address some other areas. There's potentially some later evening hours, say, in the middle of the week, perhaps until eight. Our Thursdays at some point we'd like to address because we're only open three to seven that day, which is unusual. And then we are open noon to five, so if we were to look in the future, potentially be down to, I guess, a ten to five. Actually, in the proposal, my hope is to go from current thirty to eventually forty-eight. When I started in two thousand and six, we were fifty-two hours. This would be a first step.
This would be, okay, right, good. And you said, so you have a number of senior abatement.
Yes, I have two senior abatement workers, they switch off Tuesdays.
About how many hours a week are they able to do?
They're doing each, like, every other Tuesday, maybe three hours, that's how, that's a lot. But I think, I don't know what the cap is, is it one hundred senior, I can't remember.
That sounds right, that sounds right. And I know, right, there's sort of a, there's a cap on sort of for the town, how many, like, hours can be used.
So I have a little, one of our senior abatement workers has worked for other departments, so I'm not sure how many hours he put in on those other departments as well. So as I said, he's done a pretty good job.
Yes, that's right, but not necessarily a renewable resource.
Exactly, yeah.
Does the proposed schedule of thirty-five hours, if you apply on any of those hours, or is it able to stand without them?
It's able to stand without them, but we're then challenged in the middle of the day there, figuring out who's going to cover them. Not that, you know, power and I don't know what to, what's happening in the circulation desk on those days. But in terms of, you know, the deliveries that come in, the inventory moment goes out, the circulation desk responsibilities. It's really best for us to handle some of them Tuesday right now, so I have this day every week.
Thank you.
Is there any additional cost for temporary employees in the town? Does it cost us more to have more temporary versus less temporary?
Only in terms of part-time versus.
Yeah, like, I don't know if there are any other hidden costs, you know, top of the top employees, clearly we can get into attendance. But is there like an extra administration cost of having four part-time employees doing a certain amount of work versus the same amount of hours for three?
I think, I guess.
I doubt it.
Jeremy, can you answer that question? I know, like, it does seem like there might be a bit more administration, more people is more people on payroll, et cetera, but I don't know.
Yeah, that may get lost in the noise and I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, nickel and dime this sort of thing.
I think it's a, it's a good question to ask, because we know that going from part-time to full-time.
Right, yeah, that's a big deal.
But right.
I've never asked the question of five part-time versus six part-time, does that cross?
So from our perspective, centrally, you know, there's a little bit more maybe onboarding, you know, onboard one more person. But on a week-to-week basis, whether you have four people work five hours or five people work four hours, we're processing payroll kind of anyway. It becomes more on the programmatic side from the director's perspective and the department head's perspective. Is it more difficult to schedule with fewer hours? Is it more difficult to, you know, train more people to do the same thing and have less consistency? So I would look for the department head and each specific example for that. But just as a general sense, from a payroll HR administrative point of view, it doesn't make much difference to us.
That lies in my assumptions, I don't want to assume.
Thank you, yeah. Good to ask, thank you. Yeah. So you also have volunteers who work for the library.
Yeah, actually, this is actually the nice thing. You actually have two volunteers currently that are helping assisting on Wednesday nights and on Thursday nights, which is great because it allows us to sort of catch up on processing and cataloging. The two of them have both done any number of things. They don't really work too much with the computer in terms of they don't do checkouts and that sort of thing. But weeding of materials, like I said, getting materials ready for the collection. Our library of things, we're trying to move forward on, and that takes a little bit of extra. So one volunteer we've had for, say, about a year and a half. And the other volunteer's been just a couple of months, but we hope she sticks with us. So and that's been, it's been good. Actually, the blend of volunteers, senior abatement and paid employees has worked very well. I'd say this one of the, this past year's been one of the better years where that's concerned. But yeah, you have volunteers and they don't put in, they typically put in between two and three hours of.
And probably they can be rearranged to cover vacations and that sort of thing.
That's more of the mission.
So I think that's another advantage, having an additional staff, part-time staff for redistributing hours is for coverage.
They're doing a lot of what I would consider project work, not necessarily circulation desk work, where they're serving the public that way.
I could probably do the math if I sat here and looked at it. If you wanted to request going up to the forty-eight hours, what would that total amount requested be for salaries line item? Just so that we have that knowledge of, hey, as, as we're making the assessments, you know, if, if we feel strongly, we want to try to get to this more, you know, regular schedule of, you know, opening your tent every day.
Right.
Sure, sure, much more available hours, more so thirty-five lockers. It'd be nice to know, hey, it's only that much more to bump up there and maybe we can take a swing and get you where you need to be.
Sure.
Not say that that's the way we should go or we would go.
I'm not concerned, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I just like to know what that covered.
And you, you need to have at least two people in the building.
Right, yeah.
Right, would you just maybe open up?
Terms. We've got the two left, so we have stairs and downstairs. So if we have four available hours and I want to cover and have open hours, it's just two hours, that's two open hours and two covers.
But each, each additional open hour is at least another two staffing hours, is that right?
Same, two additional, two staff.
And does it end up driving you to the need where a full-time can't be staffed?
Well, I was. The other thing that would be, I mean, frankly, would be helpful for us is that we had, as we do with the children's librarian, that somewhere down there, we'd say, now, this year's, an adult services position, that would be considered a full-time position. That would be the kind of thing to work out too.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to understand, how can we get there primarily with additional part-time assumptions?
Right.
Because you know, the fullback is always that just.
Right, exactly.
So is that possible or is it possible and is it just because we can, it should either, right?
Sure.
If the way to do that is another full-time employee, then at least now we've got a roadmap of how to get to where you want to try to get to?
Sure.
Because I don't know what that.
I mean, I would say if you paint your end state based on resource mix, part-time, full-time, you're ideal. I mean, the numbers we can calculate. If we understand what that end state intended to look like, like I said, your staffing needs.
Sure, yeah.
And that gives us something to back into.
So in this case, the, looking at forty-eight hours, you're looking at, what is the, if we have children's director and adult services.
Is forty-eight your, your end state or is it?
Yeah, forty-eight was the hope, but.
Well, say, just like we've been doing capital planning, ideally, we would have some sort of five-year plan.
Right.
What your, what your staffing plan would look like, what do you want to try to get to, like, what is your roadmap?
Sure.
Your library, right?
It's not like fire to say, if we got a five-year budget forecast, we need to understand where people want to be in five years.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
No promises.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 it's all, I think it's kind of been a lot to make better decisions of, hey, you know, there are maybe places where we can say, you know, okay, in two years, maybe this is a place where we can try to plan and get to that next step, right?
Sure.
And if there are opportunities where we can, you know, we're trying to talk about this in other areas of being able to put money aside so that we can start to fund maybe some of those positions so that they become smaller hits when they do show up.
Sure.
So if there are savings that we can put in place and get there, there's only different ways to cut it.
Right, right.
We can have the conversation if I don't know what the.
But it also takes the individual budget discussion out of being siloed, to understand what everybody's needs are over that period to say, can, it might, you might accelerate library because it's more feasible financially in two years, you know? Or we might go with, we get a grant for four firefighters, we might say, let's bite the bullet there, you know? I'm not saying, we weren't even told no on that, that was just an example.
Yes.
But, but the idea to lay out library relative needs of the town versus just each department silo, which has sort of been past practice.
Now, are you looking at, I just want to make sure, are you looking at the next five years or just however long we believe it's going to take us to get from thirty to forty-eight?
Ideally, as a department head, you should have a rolling five-year forecast of where you want to take your.
Yeah, right.
All department heads should.
And I think to me, it's, I don't think it's incumbent upon you to necessarily, for you to tell us how long you think it'll take to get there. Really, what I'd be curious to understand is where do you want to be? And then we've got to figure out how do we get there? And it might be a ten-year versus a five-year versus a three-year. As long as we know what the target is.
Yeah, if you have fifteen full-time MTEs in two years, like, okay. Appreciate the input, once we're back and re-look at this. So, yeah.
Just a quick question to Carrot House.
Yes.
You have the, the assessment, no, is that for adaptive reuse of the structure?
It is the. Directory.
Directory, sorry.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I'm sorry, it's for adaptive reuse. I just need to maintain the existing structure.
So some of the renderings that are out on the town website, expansion ideas, are those still in play from your perspective? Or is that sort of something that was done a few years ago, looking at something new?
From twenty?
Yes.
So the current idea is to maintain the structure as it is, obviously, to, to make it.
Okay.
I think, I think those proposals involve the question of what happens if you demolish the building. So there hadn't been that question of.
Right.
How could it?
Question wasn't initially, yeah, right, to reuse the building itself. Like you said, it was, take down the building, what can be put in its place? So there was a, there was three door, three editions, it was a four edition. There was a, an open air, so it was roof edition and then obviously a closed building edition.
But some of the requirements that were in those renderings are fairly specific in terms of large kitchen, large room for a hundred-plus people type of thing?
Right, that's it, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you what, what exactly the square foot is.
Be considering going in that direction now or is that kind of not even in your?
I mean, I would say at this one, yeah, sorry.
Library mistake. So our initial talks with the architects that they, literally, we just had the first meeting, is basically to, we want to reuse the space, we want to keep the historic aspect of the look of the front of the facade of the building to, you know, to help us keep that whole look. We want to use the existing building in whatever way we can to allow as much space as possible. And they're the ones that can really tell us, like, you know, what, can we knock down walls, can we, you know, or not, you know? So it kind of depends on what they say, but ideally, we want to allow to have meeting space. Programming is a big thing, we want to buy a bigger programming room and things like that. So we are, we're not, we're kind of pretending those, that old feasibility study didn't exist.
Yep.
And we're starting from scratch. So I would, I would say that those are kind of being set aside at this point.
And not so much the design, but the requirements that drove that design. So things, when I saw, you know, a huge open space for that could accommodate like a hundred people, that was like, wow, we have another asset trying to accommodate a hundred people. So from a capital planning standpoint, if we can dovetail projects, we would look to do that. If that's not really in your, your, your thinking right now, then.
Wouldn't be able to accommodate, I know that's from the wrong way, we wouldn't be able to accommodate, obviously, a senior center because we just don't have enough property there. But like we have talked about at our, at our working group meetings to include the seniors in some of our discussions. And, and can we combine some meeting space or even program space or something of that nature? So we, we have talked about that. We'd like it ideally to be community space that other people will use. Are we looking to be what the senior centers, seniors had originally proposed as a big community center? No, we just don't have the space or the parking for that.
But I would say we do want to make sure that that space is accessible after hours. And it has a separate.
Correct.
Interness that individuals could use it as a meeting space.
No, if it's a boy scout, if it's a small scout, we have a little bit more accessibility. Where now, we currently have to have a staff member.
Right.
Be there if any other, any outside group wants to use it, there has to be a staff member on.
So the one thing I would say is we think about programming use and things like that. And we would say this to the senior community center building committee, is that if there's common needs, it should only be done once. So if we think about needing space to accommodate boy scouts, girl scouts for one project, we might not need to incorporate the same reasoning for another project from a space standpoint. So as we go forward with, you know, your, your use case, and then we're looking at use cases for an updated senior community center, we just want to be, be able to kind of identify what the town needs are and land them in one or. and land them in one or the other, but not have redundancy unless it's required.
Example, it's sort of a secondary use, I think both, both of these projects have needs that are specific to the department and to the programming and, like, take time out, it's also, right, I mean, I think that.
So what am I, what are your wishes? Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know what their needs are, I'm throwing it out there to the parties that are looking at these things, let's be smart about identifying, or mitigate redundancy that might cost the town money with, across these projects. So if I saw a large meeting space that can accommodate a hundred people on two different projects, I would say the town doesn't need two large meeting rooms, that's sort of the, what I'm trying to identify, make sure we sort of put it in the right place.
And, and, but, and just to, to sort of discuss, but, but our issue is currently, um, that our programs that happen in the morning are happening in open air. Um, so when they happen, it's pretty loud in there.
Right.
Uh, and obviously, it's, it's.
There, there's no sort of.
There's no barrier there, it's necessary for any of that, so.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's part of the reason, you know, in terms of what the libraries are looking for, is that have there be sort of a little bit more of a noise control of, of the programs that are happening. We love that they're happening, and, uh, and the attendance is incredible, and, and all the things that come with that, but, um, just, you know, in terms of the logistics of running the library, when individuals are coming in, expect them not to be necessarily so. Yeah.
Any, any other questions, or Jeremy, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you, um, just a point of context, so, um, we have union contracts, um, for, settled through fiscal twenty-six with a three percent COLA. Most, uh, individual contracts with non-union folks have a three percent COLA. Um, the library director's contract, uh, which is between the library director and the board of trustees, is up at the end of fiscal twenty-five. Um, I've spoken with the chair of the board of trustees, um, and kind of how to go forward on that. Um, so just to lay out the relationship, the contracts between the trustees and the director, um, and then a salary amount is recommended by select board, um, to fund that contract, um, and then, um, the contract is actually ultimately funded by town meeting. Um, so what this, um, budget assumes right now is a three percent COLA, um, for, for the director, just the same as other non-union personnel, and that's my expectation as to what, what we'll have in the budget. Um, and then, uh, relative to, uh, one of the select board metrics for fiscal twenty-six, um, the library does a great job of collecting metrics. So if you've, uh, recall when I did do a Q-two report, um, got to talk about the, you know, many thousands of, um, visitors, or many thousands of, um, program participants, um, circulation numbers, and you'll see it in the annual town report, I just went through the other day as well. Um, so we're off to a really great start, um, in this department, as well as a number of others, but, um, being able to gather those KPIs that we talked about in the goal-setting meeting. Just wanted to add those two points of context.
Thank you. It's my, I'm in Jason, I, I see that you're there, so please do speak up if we don't notice you raising your hand.
I think you can guarantee that.
I know you're shy.
Just wanted to make sure you were, you, you can hear us, so yes, great, thank you. Okay, all right, uh, I guess any other questions for Andrew?
I don't have any, any from the finance committee that are online?
Good here, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
So, uh, Jeremy, I see who heads up for assessors, I have noticed it's just, the order on the agenda is the order that you, uh, were expecting people to come up, or is there a different order?
Yeah, that was my expectation, if there's not anyone there from the board of assessors, we can, um, uh, you know, I want it.
They are here.
Oh, okay, they're not.
Well, I, before I called them up, I didn't, I wanted to make sure there wasn't some schedule. Yeah, so if I, it might be too close, I know, uh, seems, Jeremy, and you, and you could just introduce yourselves for us, and, you know.
I'm Sheri Gates, and I am the principal assessor.
Yeah, I'm working on one of those three workrooms.
So, uh, Jeremy, did you have any introduction beyond that, or something?
Yeah, certainly, um, um, let me pull up the assessor's budget for us all right now.
Thank you.
Sorry, where are you, Sheri? One, there, one forty-one, there we go. Um, so, uh, this is the assessor's budget for this year, the, um, one, um, I'm going to delete that because we've talked about that offline. Um, the one thing that's not in here, that, um, I'd like to have Sheri talk about tonight, um, which is a new development, is, um, the program NEARMAP, um, which, uh, is kind of a cross-department functionalization, or has cross-department functions. Um, I've used it in previous communities, um, a number of folks here have used it in previous communities as well. Uh, we recently got a proposal for it, and that was after the budget submission and before tonight, or had a demo, we don't have an official proposal. So, um, we may, if we can get something buttoned up, put it in the operating budget request. Um, if not, we may come to special town meeting and ask for a special article appropriation to roll out this software in ways that we have with other, other departments. Um, but that, that's the one missing piece here, um, is, is the, the software that would be beneficial for, um, assessors and then inspectional services writ large, I know conservation uses it right now. Um, and then the same note on the salaries, um, there's a, um, that I had with some other folks. The ultimate recommended budget will be the three percent COLA, which is now reflected in the assessor's contract, so that's all buttoned up and ready to go.
I'm sorry, what item is this?
What item, the salaries?
Yeah.
So what's, what's in here as a salaries, um, is, um, uh, I think was a misreading of the contract, and we've talked about it, uh, offline outside of this meeting, so it'll be a number, I believe, slightly lower than that, it'll be in the ultimate reflected budget. Um, just when you see from a department request, and it'll, um, yeah, from a department request to what I think a recommended budget should look like, there'll be a small discrepancy, and it's not, um, it's not me, you know, cutting the assessor's salary, it's, um, based upon a vote of the board, um, at the last, at the last, um, board meeting. The board of assessors meeting.
Or how it came off my view.
Right, so, um, Sheri, are you presenting to us?
Yes, I am. Um, well, as Jeremy was talking about with the, um, the NEARMAP, um, this is a program that, um, it's a, it's a, basically, it's a GIS, uh, program, um, and the company does a flyover in this area every three year, uh, three times per year. We did have a meeting, uh, which included, um, Highway, uh, myself, and, um, Fox Historical, um, in regards to learning about the, this, uh, program, what, uh, capabilities it has and everything. We're still waiting to, uh, see whether we're going to do a two-week trial, um, on this. Um, I always said that due to your scheduling and things that are going on with that department, it, we couldn't do it right away, uh, so I want to, uh, we need to find out what is the best time, uh, for them to, uh, be able to, um, look at this program and do the two-week, uh, trial, wanting to see what they, uh, they think of it. But they did send, um, after that meeting, they did send, um, what the costs, um, two subscription options. Um, one of them, uh, includes, um, the auto photos, and then also panorama and oblique imagery, so you can, uh, when you click on one of those programs, you can see more of the angles of the home or, or the building. Uh, you're able to measure, um, the height of the building along with what the, uh, the length and width of the buildings are. Um, it also includes unlimited licenses, uh, for the town, so every person that works for the town basically could have access, uh, to this program. And that would be eighty-three hundred per year.
I would just add, though, they're increasing prices at nine percent a year for the next five years. That's, that's what they told me.
Contract.
They're doing that repeatedly. And I, I absorbed two-nine percent increases in the last two years. So I call them every year, I have a call, but, in fact, you have it through me right now. Assessors offices, also.
Um, conservation.
They have it through me.
So.
I, I do my contract and all, so you're getting it through up there right now.
That sounds like a deal.
But, so it's, it's eighty-three hundred a year, but you're saying that it's going up by.
They told me nine percent a year, for at least the next five years. Because the flights are getting more expensive, I think.
That's still reasonable.
They fly these big part of the space three times, what they call leaves-on, leaves-off. Um, you're talking one generation removed from what the US fly satellites are all the time. Basically, when the US government goes to the next resolution set late, they basically license them off. This company, now that I'm sure. Look at this, right, um, you could tell, I got a photo of my son getting into his car, and you could read the license plate. You could see my straw hat on the back deck of my car, that's how it is.
Cool.
And then using this program, it has been, um, extremely beneficial with, um, measuring properties, especially if they're ones that we're not, we can't get access to for whatever reason, um, we've been able to.
I could, most assessing departments that are very legit limited are using these in the place of exterior inspections when somebody gets a deck proportioned. It costs too much to send somebody out there now, and you don't know when exactly they did it. This one, you just pick up any day, scroll through, do growth, measure them. It's also amazing when people say they're building a six-by-eight deck and the deck that is finished is all by twenty. So, it's an actual tool, it's just expensive.
And so, just to, to clarify, I know, Jeremy, you said something at the beginning, so is this, is this in the budget spreadsheet, this software request?
No, it's, it, it's not, it's not in the spreadsheet here.
Okay.
We didn't have numbers, we just got a demo last week, I believe, um, so we didn't, we didn't have numbers. Um, it would either be in a recommended going forward, or, uh, perhaps, like I said, a special town meeting request to fund a special article, and then in the twenty-seven budget, have it rolled in.
So we're not ready to in, include it in this budget yet, in this budget request yet?
Well, I mean, would we want to put a, like, a ten thousand dollar placeholder in the event, Jeremy, we get a, an item for this, this budget? I mean, it's just an additional ask we'd need to weigh against other asks.
Yeah, we have, uh, eight, like, I believe Sheri had said, eighty-three hundred a year for the obliques, or seven thousand a year for the verticals, and then there's additional, you know, um, additional bolt-ons you can do from that. Um, so putting a, you know, eighty-three plus whatever the, those smaller optional ones that, um, assessors, conservation, planning, or otherwise would find useful, um, yeah, that'll be part of the additional ask piece.
Can you see her hand?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask about the, uh, cost-value proposition, so are we saying that we, this tool will be valuable because we will recover lost fees? Or, I'm, just a second ago, I heard Jeremy mention other boards, and so what's, what's the value that we get out of it beyond, you know, trying to recover people who were looking to cheat the permit system? Um, is there something else that we gain from it beyond that?
Um, conservation uses it in their enforcement actions, um, so be able to kind of tell, in the same way that exterior inspections aren't always, uh, possible for this assessors, uh, conservation can, um, use it, um, in a similar time-series way without having to go on to properties. Um, that doesn't have necessarily revenue associated with it, um, the principal use, um, is on assessing.
What could offset an employee going out to the site as well, I mean?
Yeah, so it would be like a productivity enhancement rather than like a, a revenue one.
Okay.
Uh, I, anecdotally, um, the first year that we used this in Attleboro, it paid for itself many, many times over. Um, and the only reason Attleboro had it is because there was a city councilor who was the chief assessor in the city of Totten, and kind of came and advocated for it in, in, in Attleboro, so, um, yeah, it's, initial return on investment was quite good, at least in my limited experience.
That would be rich content.
That's certainly rich content.
Thank you.
The other thing it does give you, Jeremy, if you do get in an, in an argument, uh, with somebody over a violation, um, you capture a gate scan photo. It, it will capture the photo that you're looking at, and with the date of it, the date it was taken. So there can be no argument who took the photo when. So, and by the way, you have it, you have it on me through the middle of twenty-six, but I'm retiring, and so after that, I gotta shut it off.
Yeah, I, I also just didn't want to be in the position of relying, um, on the license of another municipality for something that we find to be functional. Um, I, I wouldn't want us to be on the opposite end of that relationship, so I don't want us to be on this end of the relationship either, and if we, we find it to be useful for the town, then we should, we should have our own license and configure it in a way that we want to configure it. But we do appreciate, uh, the access to it.
Hey, you stole my, you stole my right hand, I'm going to take your ass, and I was.
Or party to that. Oh, really? Oh.
No, the fact I'm still paying for that, I will replace her for nine months.
Well, your loss is our gain, so.
However, putting my vendetta on, you got the best person in the world.
Okay, all right, that was, that was what I thought, you thought you had that, that, uh, position there, so, yeah. So, okay, is, so, are there?
Mr. O'Brien recruited her behind that.
Oh, was that what happened? All right, there was more drama there that, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Sheri, did you have additional things you were going to talk about?
Um, well, just, um, you know, I should consider the budget, um, most of the line items are all, um, the same as, uh, last year with the section of postage and supplies, um, postage from three seventy-five to four hundred, and supplies from three twenty-five to four hundred. It's kind of just because of the increasing cost of the postage and, um, increasing cost in, uh, the supplies, uh, overall, um, everything is, is still made, uh, has, has been level funded, and, uh, do you have the, uh, the one, uh, line item, uh, for segment, this is, uh, third contract with the board of assessors and personal assessor, uh, for maintaining the Massachusetts accredited assessor's designation, um, which I have to renew every, uh, two years, and, uh, taking courses, including, um, the seven-hour UCP, uh, course. And, uh, that's worth, um, a thousand dollars per year.
That's under publications, I think.
Right, yes, yeah, and, yeah, we don't put publications or anything.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that, we'll make sure that gets into a five-one line, so it gets voted correctly as a, as a salary. Um, but, uh, it's important to call it out here, and with Sheri's, um, description as to what it is, but we'll make sure that's not under a five-two, or whatever that is, uh, that it's a, that's a five-one for the vote.
Thank you. Sheri, was there anything else, or we have other questions?
No, unless anybody has any.
All people understand, recharge for me, letting me have my NEARMAP, when you guys send my nomination. Award for a good person.
Okay, sorry.
I have that.
I, yeah.
I have that on the phone.
Any, any questions on, Jeremy?
Now, just here coming along, I'll say you got probably one of the finest processes in the state because you got somebody with decades of experience who also knows. The software use here, which is one of the. In terms of the number towns using it, it's third in ranking. But also probably one of the best guy in the world, but she's had decades of experience with it, so you got something, let me tell you. Sorry, my fault with Ken doing behind that.
Glad you made peace with that. Uh, it sounds like the, the testing has benefited two years, thank you.
No, just trying to explain over my table here.
Any, any questions?
Finance committee online, you folks have questions?
Good here, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so thank you so much for joining us. Oh, you've stayed here right for longer. Would you like to join us in the team?
I'm the director.
Yes, thank you. So yes, next we have how we agenda with the water department, so. You could introduce yourselves again, just in his comments.
Chairman of the Board of Water Commissions. Dan Meyer, I'm a clerk for the Water Board.
Dirk is from Missoula. He's, but he does everything for the water.
Longer title doesn't quite fit in, so.
I've studied every year at the change. That is, you know, some hero.
So our water budget is split in half, I mean, I know this before, so. Looking at the portion of the fund, the general funds, this represents town and municipal block supplies. So that's town hall, the senior center, the library and park complex. Costs associated with that.
It's primarily testing.
Yeah.
Hydrants.
She asked a memo, I think there's just some contractual increases that are going up. Well, no, you only have that way, I don't need to have that, but just a general. Contract, what's called the water operators, basically we pay somebody who holds licenses that has to do all testing. There is one somewhat substantial increase, the line item for public hydrant fees. So this is the town paying the rent fees for the fire hydrants, this is the general fund, we do some hydrants benefit. The whole town needs to fix properties. It's part of the terms of negotiations of the water department, Hope Dale allows additional connect rates. One of those conditions was to increase per hydrant fee. We were actually paying a below market rate, below what Hope Dale customers were paying because they baked the contracts, they changed the language to basically say that fee is now the fee that all customers pay. W Road is still, I think it's W Road is still locked in a different rate, I'm sure that'll change when that contract is up. But the, the increase is two thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And if you don't know the situation, basically you'll be able to decide what the charges, and we said, thank you, sir, and we have another. We have no. Yeah, we're at their mercy, he's where to sit.
The good news is we came to a agreement that's going to allow two new commercial hookups on Cape Road, which will, when they build generating. Nice to see two properties that have been empty for years.
It actually, they, outside of us, allowed the gas station.
Yes.
So it's actually three new businesses. Whoever, National Bridge is around the kind of thing that gas station.
Notice that.
They've made a couple of this.
Yeah.
National Bridge is not connected, and if you look all in front, you see the wires, like six miles down. Yeah, so everything's ready to go, but they cannot fit the store until they get the power. They're, they're good ready to go for six months.
Yeah, that, I've been meaning to ask around, why is that?
That's why.
It is so convenient to be able to pull in.
National Bridge has gone to moving some poles in Holston that they agreed to do four years ago. They're like three, four years behind either. They are connecting the new warehouse, there's just like, they, they did run the wire.
There's no, it's not lying, they put the poles in and they, that the poles, and probably it's, it's well, there's no wires in the poles, they just, they have the poles in. Cause I was looking at that too. So I think they had a contractor put those poles in.
Yeah, the, the gas station, you can see with the pole right near the. Probably way closest to Route one forty. The wires are just hanging there waiting for the transformers and they come around to the building.
And maybe off topic, I don't know if that's something the town potentially can advocate for, but.
I think the whole discussion on electricity is off topic for water.
Well, anyway.
Not supposed to mix the two.
Anyway, the other, the other locations is if you want to know. Are the corner of Bates and one forty, where the old fairhouse is burned down, that's a warehouse by building. And then the corner opposite, well, for those who look at it, I have a Dick Skinner's house, he's in D. But the corner of Art Fair, the U S N one forty opposite the gas station. And that's either going to be another gas station, believe it or not, or a financial institution. That's how they're marketing it.
It's good news that, that they approved those water matchups.
All the owners of the land had to pay, but it did too. The beach side, trust me.
Well, I'm glad there, there was a resolution. That I knew.
And then, so just worth noting two other things, this, the town hall well, the old well has finally been deconditioned, we're on the new well, that project is done.
Great.
So that has been several years of progress. Either it's a, there's a lot, there was a special account for that, still waiting on a few things, hopefully that can get closed out soon.
That's fallen under the elevator.
Yeah. So now, I don't know if there's any questions on that part of the budget, maybe.
The only thing that I would say is similar, familiar, Dan, you heard us talk about sort of what the, you know, five-year view looks like with water, five years. In terms of testing.
Reaching point with the rates, and one more year increases, I predict you're going to see people give up the system of wells.
And I'm thinking more about public.
Yeah.
Water supply, the potential cost of expanded testing on an annual basis that's going to come our way, that would be something we want to try to understand.
We are very fortunate that the only location with PFAS is here.
Right.
The treatment system is removing it, we are actually now on annual monitoring, so that's good news. Um, the other, and the other location said zero detected, it wasn't below limit.
But, but the testing is going to be something that's mandatory, right?
Well, we, so at this, as of today, we have complied with everything. They required us to do initial testing and came back non-detected, so all those locations are good.
Right, but we have to test.
It'll be cyclical.
Repeated.
This would be, yeah.
There are several times here you have to test those four pole quarters. And again.
My, my question, do, do we do that today, or is that going to be additional testing we'll need to take on over the next week?
We have scanning from D P on whether they're going to fire. I think it's coming on any one more year left.
Yeah.
Though if there's things on the horizon, I will, you know, to tie it to previous session of the library. Those proposals where you're looking, you know, so these are non-conforming public water supplies, so basically if you want to make changes, we have to go to D P and get their approval.
And, and just.
Which, which maybe, I mean, they allowed here, they allowed at least, they shouldn't, they, you know, they, they are willing to work with us, but there will be potential costs with those in terms of engineering and. Maybe even changes that are required, if that, that triggers requiring to have some special filter that we didn't have before.
I just feel like you know, when I talk about the rectory building. The well is outside the rectory, but all the guts are in basement of the rectory.
Seaters have a problem a lot, it's a conversation not often involves some engineering. So I think that's the limiting factor, considering, I mean, it's same, we, similar to Parkland, you know, we wanted to do a subject for beach bathrooms, but we're limited in where it can go because of the well and the restrictions. So it complicates things. But it would be good, to your point, to maybe take a look at all the testing and understand what the age of these well pumps and if we have another town hall situation brewing.
And it depends on, quite honestly, I expect in this administration, the EPA might lessen its requirements, but I expect Massachusetts to keep them tough.
Yeah.
So I don't see them going away.
I, I actually thought there'd be additional testing required based on some of the state requirements, if that's not the case. I was looking at the four thousand dollar, the testing line item, and I didn't know for five years, do you expect that to grow in any significant way?
Probably, but not, not this time.
And also.
I mean, also that that includes coordinating PFAS, which we no longer have to do, so that is a little bit of a buffer. Once we understand what the maintenance is between them.
Yeah, but I think this is about looking at the five years.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, when we get the next annual scale, we should go through the price set out.
There's, there's, there's two factors in there, one is what tests are required, and the second is getting a low cost water operator that can do the tests. So we have fairly good one now, but if that price starts going up, we have to look and see if there's anybody else. Again, we're achieving.
Yeah.
And usually it's labor cost, not the testing. Cause the lab storage and the lab storage.
It was, it was the PFAS that was killed.
Yeah.
It's three hundred dollars test, you know, the test.
Dan, on the wages and salary, and you said that there was a surplus, was that just due to?
So.
Hours?
Yeah, let me just look at it, it's going to be a issue, but I believe that was because of. If that's the salary that pays me, for some reason, it was like twenty thousand dollars of that fine, that I don't know why. Um, if that's the one we're looking at.
Experience with.
This line, there's a surplus, so I just won't fund it again. No, okay, so I think that was a few years ago.
It's important to be able to screen the public system, and it's important to be used for.
Yeah, to be honest, I'm not sure of the history of that, I'm just, I think it's just one point two five hours times by rate times fifty-two gives me the amount, so it exceeds that, so it needs to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand, I don't understand, like, so back up on that. I know last year we did increase them both a couple of percent just to make sure there's, that's why I hate that, I don't know.
Jeremy, did you have something to add on this? Go get your bed.
My, my salary sheet that I got from H R has one point seven five hours, which may be where the discrepancy lies.
You think I know the top of my head, I think it is one seven five.
So I have one. I have one seven five times your hourly rate times fifty-two point two weeks is actually two thousand four hundred and ten dollars. So that's what I have in the recommended budget. Like I said, there's, this is all over the, what people put in for the requested stuff, so. I'll clean that up, not to clean it up, I'll, I'll take what we actually have being paid through payroll and apply twenty-six rates. Fiscal twenty twenty-six rates into the recommended budget, so we can dial it in as close as, close as possible.
It is, it's one two five and a piece seven five, so maybe, maybe I have one.
Oh, it is one two.
It's five hours, just it's split, you know, fortunately between two funds.
The other hours were probably a game over.
Alright, so that's that, I think it's one of one of the enterprise fund. Do you want me to share this, or do you have something to share? Jeremy?
Yeah, I can, I, I, can you see, can you see the enterprise fund on the screen now?
Yes, yeah. So you're looking at, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you're looking at the revenues, go ahead, take it away.
Yeah, yeah, so this, the revenues that we have in our enterprise fund, that green column is the current F R twenty-six graph. So there's our proposed revenue, it's actually a slight decrease. We had overestimated a lot of seats several years ago, and as you can see, our controls are much lower, so we're just leaving them alone, it's slowly creeping up to meet that.
Boy, are you sleep on him.
You know, the, the struggle that's happening is, it can't mention several years, we keep raising rates, which we have to do to cover our costs and natural deals rate increases. People start using less water and then we pull up less revenue, it's kind of a whole catchaway too.
We're, we're getting to the point where it's going to make sense for people, if they want to finance a new well over a ten-year period, it's. Another year or two is going to be cheaper to do that than to pay our annual fees, boy, hope they'll keep fresher.
Yeah, so that's.
And we haven't seen it yet, but I predict it's coming based on comments I hear from people.
I did, this does include some small increases from the proposed new developments, and it includes twenty thousand dollars being appropriated from retained earnings. The intention is to have that money then set aside, so we have twenty thousand dollars if something breaks and we have to fix it.
Yeah, we just.
Unfortunately, has happened.
We've had one, two, three breaks on one street, and we had the ill despite all on forty let go recently. That was the first time, that was dug up, what, nineteen thirty-seven? Nineteen forty-seven. Fortunately, the leak occurred right in front of the business that fixes the floors. And they saw it in before we did.
Well, it's going to happen somewhere.
That's, well, when you have a system, I mean, the main vein is one forty, and that dates back to the nineteen, you know, late nineteen forties. Which is why when you put in the enterprise fund a year later, we put in a capital group if they, to start building up money for that. Thank God, because we had four breaks on a tell, uh, three breaks on a tell the farm within an eighteen-month period. And then we had the one over forty, and I, you know, I just sit there at night going, you know, when is that thing on the forty to go? Is that millions?
Yeah, and I think, I, I think that was one of the things we did submit through the capital plan and just those costs of what the eventual replacement of all the asbestos and remains are going to be. It's something, you know, all the time, we're going to have to start thinking about whether that can be baked into this water project if it proceeds, or otherwise we may need to start really planning for that.
Well, we're actually lucky that the guys pulled the warehouse, took out, and then feed.
Like maybe close to a thousand, you know, so at least all that's new.
Thousand feet of asbestos cement, they moved and replaced it with brand new pipe, they had no cost to us. To get that built in there, we were very happy about that.
We don't raise for, for the section of our name.
Well, that's because they curved it instead of bending it. I'm saying, I mean, angles, they bent it under the ground, and every part was curved at that point.
And then it's like, if you want to scroll to the, the other half, so that on the expense side, expenses are, are pretty much, you know, they're going up a little bit. The bottom line, it's, it's a break-even budget. You know, so our contract, the contractor fees need to go up, my salary is going up a little bit. The expenses, we actually shuffled some things around a little bit, but the overall expenses are actually down one point four five percent. That's pretty much it, we're currently, I don't know what that one says. We're currently, the current balance is negative twenty-six thousand, but that does not include the fourth quarter. Although I do think we are going to close, we have been closing at a profit, we will probably close this, this year much closer to break even, because we said spend now ten thousand dollars on these emergency repairs.
That's, that's the capital fee, that stays with us. The users pay a capital fee and fifty dollars a quarter, Hope Dale's, their system, and we do twelve fifty a quarter. Just return earnings, that's our capital fees, it's fifty dollars a year.
But I think I know.
Not a lot, but.
I can go a step further than what you're saying, I think we're reaching the point if the rates keep going up that this enterprise fund may not be viable, and we're going to have to raise the rates so high that's unsustainable. Because the fixed costs, you know, they go up.
Yeah, that does fit into the payment of the level of things. So we're just funding for a project, so, and then grants funding for a project, but past years, I went. And right now, we're looking at grants for, what is your face, three? Or they go through, we have four. I mean, the good news on that is we have a gorgeous. I don't come free, with the exception of the usual crap, they get minted, they're not PFAS or anything. Water that exceeds the projected use of a whole town. And when you did that, the question is, you know, when you get through phase four, then you get into money. Big money. And how do you leverage that? Especially candidly, I mean, most of the towns that were getting grants from the feds, they will be withdrawing as of the January time frame. As of the uh January twenty third. So we were gonna get a million dollar earmark from the feds from Stewart, Paulston, that's gone. So likely within the next forty years of getting any money for installing water, I mean, I don't know. That's a biggie.
Cross that bridge as they say.
Well, this is the one we're gonna come back and cross this. Just knowing what it costs now and put it in foot. Looking at that, I'm just sitting there going, you know. It, it is one of those.
That's all I have, I thought there was any questions on the specific area.
Thank you. Any more to add, uh, Jeremy?
Uh, no, I, I think they, they covered the issues um pretty well. Um, if you recall the, um, when the congressman is here and we talked about um federal money for water infrastructure. There's not a lot out there for new builds to begin with. Um, so uh picture is pretty bleak uh anyway um on the funding piece. So yeah, we're moving on to phase four again, you know, state level grant money for that. So no local dollars have been expended on these water studies, um, which, which the team's proud of. So as we continue into phase four, I'll keep the board updated um as to, we'll doing some financial modeling now. Um, and, and see what that looks like and see what our options are going forward.
Alright, thank you.
I did, just, just for the record, I, I would say, so the current balance and retained earnings of the enterprise fund is fifty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. And then from that, we're looking to appropriate twenty thousand to be available for next year's budget.
Okay.
Just, just be my questions.
Thank you.
And one major break. Actually, the same to keep me up. Your science section was fresh, but we have one, one person stolen. On the one forty neighbor, one person nearby right off that pain. Her uh internal plumbing had come to stand up flush her. And she wound up uh having to bring a plumber a couple hundred dollars. They said. So, the, you know, size, that's some things.
Great, so any, any more questions?
Anything from FinCom online? None here.
Good here, thank you.
All set.
Mike and Jason, any questions?
All set.
Thank you. Alright, well, great, thank you so much, Kevin, and I know, Dan, you're not leaving yet.
You've been asked.
I was saying, yes, it's a, it's a, well, parks committee.
So, so yes, then we have uh parks department, so right, so um, you see, if you could introduce yourselves in this context, that would be wonderful.
Dan, I'm Director of Parks and Recreation, also Parks Commissioners.
I'm the lead, also a Parks Commissioner.
Hopefully, I'm looking at the same section of the budget. So our budget was split up into two pieces, um, so on the recreation side. The only increase, we're asking for a little five hundred dollars, the lifeguard made his account, that's just to cover increases in salaries. As we're trying to remain competitive. That's, that's it there. Do you think, no, I kind of, what, what a good shape this year, we got some really good applications for lifeguard, which we don't really get, so that's a good sign. We just sent out a whole bunch of emails this afternoon. Um, and then the other portion of our budget is the rest of the items. So there's a semi increase in the maintenance wage line, line item again. Um, to remain competitive with, with ways we're paying and, and in the future discussions, because they're gonna. Um, be able to pay what we're looking to do in the future. On my position, there's a larger increase, uh, math is not done correctly. So this is to, to make this match with the correct contract and increasing that we're done. The amount of those were special timing, I don't think was enough. And then a slight decrease in postage, just because we don't, we're not mailing anything anymore. Um, sanitary line is what mainly is paying the tight tank pumping at the beach, so that, those costs keep going up. Um, there's a large increase in the lights line, this is our electric bills. Um, this one has kind of gotten away from us, and you see it's gone up a little bit and then stayed the same. When I start to look at it, we're underwater, we're not, you know, we don't have enough money to pay. Um, the increased electric bills, this is before the fuel light project, which we'll have to, we'll charge fees for the use of those lines specifically.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick, the, 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 the salary line items? Thirty two five, that's an increase?
Oh, sorry, I, I, you're not looking at the same thing.
Okay.
So yeah, they combined those into one line item. Let me look at what Jeremy has.
Oh, so the thirty two and the forty four were one up, the sixty nine, three, kinda, that's your, was.
Yes.
Okay.
They combined them, I would like to keep them separate, because one's seasonal and one's full time and it just. It's so easier to, I had to make sure we're not screwing something up or spending money we don't have.
But so what you're saying is your role is split into two line items? That I see the director, then landscape maintenance crew, like.
Yeah, I think they're backwards.
They're backwards. The thirty two five is supposed to be the landscape maintenance group.
Okay.
Yeah, I love separate line, shoot the ages.
But they're both you.
Yeah, well, so that, no, that parks, the other one, that, that maintenance wages or whatever, that landscape line is, it would hit the seasonal staff.
Oh, okay.
That kind of.
So you, you're forty four one and the landscape proves thirty two five?
Yeah, it's okay, the maintenance staff we hire.
Okay, okay, thank you.
John, John, I, John, I hate to do this to you, but um you guys are a quorum of the parks commission and you guys don't have a posted meeting. Um, so if you. Do you have a posted meeting?
No, I forgot to do that.
Okay, yeah, so if John could just step away from talking about parks related stuff for now, um, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, I realize it's too late, then we probably should have posted. Close down.
You'll get to talk, you'll get to talk enough later, John, don't worry.
And then the other increase is on the site improvements line, uh, we're asking for initial a thousand dollars to cover increased costs to hire about contracted services to do some more specialized work. Uh, one of the issues, like this town hall campus needs a whole lot more involved, uh, work we hire. We had, luckily, somebody involved was able to help us out, but we had to pay somebody to come in and do some cleaning. Um, of the, of these um drainage basins. And do some cleanup. You know, I will say longer term, this is, you know, one of the advantages to looking at this full time maintenance position is, this is the kind of stuff that. You know, if we had somebody in house that could take on this work, we wouldn't need to contract out. At the short term, there's several of these types of items that we're just not able to do and we're not keeping up with. Things are very, very fun, are getting over. Um, and then a small increase in the travel training line is actually just used for better fix, um, some of those fees that go up. So it's the, the state and the national park association. And then bond cost. So that is our request for the parks budget.
Can you help me understand the difference between site improvement um line item and the building maintenance? Like the focus is different, right?
So site improvements used to be its own kind of separate line years ago in the budget. And that, my understanding is that was for like new things, like, almost like small capital things. Um, versus the building maintenance is, you know, the window, we'll need to fix it. Or, you know, maybe regular technician to fix something of maintenance. Um.
Okay.
Site improvements has been looked at as more of their properties, if that makes sense. Fixing something in, you know, a field.
Okay, thank you. Ones outside, ones inside.
Yeah, you know, there's also a field maintenance line too. But I think sometimes when they meet at the charter accounts, there's probably room to combine some of these.
Yeah.
In the whole budget, that was a separate, it was a separate expenses, it's all. I think in terms of parks budget, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. I think we're in good shape.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Um, the, the lighting project, you expect that to come online?
So, it, they have to be done by July one, lights were, lights were delivered. We are working with the vendor, we, they need to give us some details with details that they owe us. So we can sign off on one of the specific locations and calls and things like that. The last conversation I had is they were waiting for the drill come, I guess they drilled flings, they were precast company bases. And so they need to scare them back, they seem to think they could get stuff done in April.
And, sorry, is it memorial?
Yeah, the, the parking.
Is, is.
So I'm.
Bit of a tangent, but has, is there any chance of solar panels to, uh?
Funny you mentioned that, so that is one of the things that's on the list of projects that I would love to dive into. If we had this maintenance position that freed me up to focus.
Okay, alright.
I know, I would love, I would.
Yeah, cause I mean, so I see the cost of electricity going up and I, you know.
I think it'd be really cool to put solar on every one of those concession stands and buildings and maybe, even if individually they don't, you know, maybe just thirty you pay off or something. I think it would, it would send a message.
But I, I don't know, I know, there have been.
Yes.
New federal incentives that municipalities can take advantage of, but I don't know what's the status of those.
Yeah, I'll have to do some more research.
But anyhow, but okay. Happy to know that you've been thinking about it and thanks.
Yeah.
Well, revisit that question. So that was, yeah, question that came up, but not about this budget, more about future budgets.
Me talking about a capital tomorrow.
Yeah, I guess the only other question I, I would be asking about the, the user fees for those lights, do you have a payment system set up?
So, yeah, it'll be done and at some point, we are gonna need to request an audience with you guys to formally accept a very generous donation from youth sports. Some of them, twenty five thousand dollars towards that project, so I'm still working on the details. Um, but I think, I think you guys have to formally accept that donation, it'd be nice to thank everybody. Okay. So we, parks discussed that we are going to waive their facility fees in exchange for at least five years as credit for that donation. Now that said, we leverage our, those fees, they do tens of thousands of dollars when we work on these fields. Yeah. Did, we can work on the fields and we split with them. I think it was around fifteen thousand, and then we paid separate, they paid the best, they put in all those fences. We do, so we're usually make sure that we, we're getting some major investment, you know, versus the dollar an hour. You know, a hundred bucks, but.
Yeah.
To have that level of investment, they, they're gonna go out there and take care of the facilities. And in terms of the active operating of lights, we're gonna have to have a conversation about that. It did come up briefly in our last meeting. And we have the full income, the exact cost of all those lights. It was like a test for us right now, a dollar an hour. So these will be all the L Ds. But yeah, I think, I think, I think you should have that, that obviously. Funds is that very clearly supporting, not stealing centers.
Dan, Dan, do your current, I should know the answer to this, do your current facility fees um go into a revolving fund or are they a general fund revenue?
They go into revolving fund.
Okay, so if we're gonna have increased costs for the use of a facility, um, and we collect a revenue for it. I wouldn't want to see one hundred percent of that increased cost beyond the general fund, you know, to be able to light the lights more. Um, so there would have to be, you know, we'd come up with either some sort of revenue split or some sort of uh expenditure shifting to make sure that um our, our expenses follow our revenues.
Yeah, I, I would agree, so this, this request for a thousand dollars is our current lighting bills.
Okay.
You know, and maybe, maybe that, you know, that's the, the feedback, maybe we need to have that company, some of that is the parking lot lights. And gonna find out if we can switch those to LED, but it's not the same.
Okay, thanks.
And I, we did have another request for parks, if you wanted to tie into this before we kind of share position.
I think so, and unless there's another question about what we've already talked about.
This is Jesse, I may be missing it, but are the camp counselors and like snack shack people and stuff, are they lumped into one of these line items?
They are paid out of the revolving fund, so then the summer rent program and the snack shack are operated through the revolving fund and self funding. The lifeguards have always been on the town buddy's side.
I see, okay, thank you.
There's admissions from Sumasens, revenue from Sumasens season pass admissions also goes back to the general fund.
Questions?
And I have the number, it's not an exact number, but the. Somewhere I have like the, on paper, kind of off of the beach.
Right.
Say it's like. Cost of five thousand dollars or so, but it's a, no, we got to the town.
Yeah, so we, Jesse, we have over a hundred thousand dollars a year in payroll coming out for, for those positions out of the park revolving fund.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I, I wasn't tying that to what we were looking at on the screen before, okay, now I get it.
Yeah, the, the other request I had, so I, in the process of reviewing this and reviewing the artists of the warrant, realized, um, so. Parks has a revolving account, annually, we have to vote a spending cap. Um, however, I've realized we are very close to exceeding that for the current fiscal year. And so the mechanism to increase that is the joint vote of the FinCom and the Select Board. Um, and I think we'll also propose into, in the warrant, we'll propose an increase limit. I didn't realize it was, we were this close, but so far to date, the cap is a hundred and sixty five and we spent a hundred and fifty. And this, Jeremy just said a hundred and four thousand, that was just some payroll.
It's not a question, it means self funding, so it's still self funding, you just have an artificial capital you can expend.
Yeah, so the revolving.
Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, is there a revolving fund, you have to, you're, you're taxed on how much you can spend, maybe less. I'm sure there's a reason behind that, I think there's other, there's a limit on like the total amount of revolving funds, you can have town wide and some percentage of your tax or something.
How did we, but why are we so far off?
Um, because I think we're so much bigger than we anticipated. We just came up with this number based on the past numbers and then.
But, but your, your head count, your largest lineup payroll, that should be known going into a fiscal year.
Yeah, so we, I have to go back and look at the history, I think we're increasing in ten, twenty thousand each year. Um, and the other thing is, we also have been using this account for smaller capital things, so you can see we've spent twenty one thousand dollars in fields and facilities. John just got us a quote, we have to fix the driveways, that's another potentially fourteen thousand that we're gonna need to spend, which, you know, we should, should spend this money on the park and dump it right back in the facility. But that would then kick into that cap on top of payroll.
Wait, what was that?
I may find that everybody's in agreement with that last statement, just so you know. Cause this stuff should go through capital too, if it's of that.
I can, I was, I thought you didn't want to think on twenty five.
No, that, right.
You know, so then, I think, um. At, at town, it's part of the town, it's one of the markets, we vote on the charter, all caps.
So I mean, with, so this, it went up to one sixty of the last.
I think, I'd have to go back and look, I just honestly.
I guess I was curious how regularly it is.
I think, couple of years ago, we switched the type of revolving account, we did S line. To just a normal revolving account, and we put a cap on it, and I think every year we upped it a little bit. But apparently we weren't upping it enough, to be honest, I wasn't looking at it that closely and. And you know, I mean, we have close to seventy employees.
And then.
Yeah, it's okay, it was huge.
Sure, there's some, I don't know, is it payroll is also going to go up for next?
Well, so that's what I put together, you know, so I would like to ask, I'd like to raise, I believe I said, um. Two hundred thousand for the remainder of fiscal twenty five, and then I'm gonna ask for two twenty five or two fifty for twenty six. But I will go back and verify and make sure we have a solid estimate of what, what it will actually be based on our payroll. But I think just for the remainder through July first, estimating, you know. Five thousand in expenses for the rent program, thirty five for the snack shacks, that's food, twenty five in beach, three thousand on field facilities. Two thousand equipment payments, eight thousand on, it's mostly software and credit card fees, sixteen hundred in payroll, and that doesn't even include the parking lot thing we just figured out. That's forty thousand. So that gets one fifty to ninety. So I think two hundred would be safe.
I see the current balance is two twenty.
The current balance in there is two hundred and twenty thousand, which is probably a little on the high side. And again, I think that's one of the things that we can then focus on. Is some of these, you know, programming that we can be doing as well as these smaller projects. We have tons of these little things that I don't think need to get fixed.
Yeah.
Whether that new position is doing it or not able to do. That's quite a bunch of stuff we can do here.
Yeah, and I remember one of the arguments when this was changed to a regular revolving, just to take that excess revenue and dump it back into the facilities to keep the money.
Yeah, you know, I mean, long term, I would love to have some sort of building for the rent program. That's a very long term goal to look at. So that classroom's going to exceed its lifespan at some point. It just, it's time.
I would think that we need to see more specifics on what are all of these things that could be done because I hear it, I haven't seen it. This is a big revolving account. There's a lot of money going through there. So I'm not saying anything's wrong, but to be honest, when I hear, I have it. The budgeting aspect of the revolving account for that cap, we need to be tighter on. We can't be twenty five percent off in terms, especially when payroll, which is a planned expense, is a big portion of that. I just, you know, I, we got to meet our needs for this fiscal year, but I would want, Jeremy, I'd want more details around raising caps and understanding what's in and what's out and things like that. There's more of a, from my perspective, and it's for any longer term move on that cap. We have to meet our needs.
So budgetarily, actually, Jason, you had your hand up first. Sorry. Go ahead.
So, uh, right, I just wanted to continue that line of reasoning that Mike just had there and I just, additional information that I would like on top of that is when, when the last time we voted to do this was? And how many times we've done this? Like, and like, why, why did we put the bylaw in place? If we are overriding all the time, I don't remember doing it the last two years. And like the last time we did it, why? That was it. Thanks.
So it's actually MGL that drives this, not a bylaw. So MGL for regular department revolving funds says town meeting sets the expenditure cap each year. And then, then Dan said, it takes a simple, not a simple vote. He said, it takes a vote of Select Board and FinCom to increase it mid-year, which sounded wrong to me. It was like, shouldn't town meeting also do that? But for the type of revolving fund that this is set up as, no, it's just Select Board and FinCom that, that has to raise the cap. And so that's kind of an important distinction is that we don't vote a budget, we vote a spending cap. And the reason we drive kind of large revenue or large fund balances is kind of twofold. One is that the expenditure cap doesn't mean a revenue cap. And also, we don't necessarily spend up to the cap each year. But a question for you, Dan. Payroll in this program is a little bit different than saying, you know, we have five folks on the highway labor team and we know their salaries and steps. Does your staffing and salary, kind of not salary, your staffing model a bit fluid at this point for this coming summer? Is it, is it driven by how many folks you have sign up and do you end up hiring more people if you have more revenue come in? How, how does that, how does that work?
Um, yeah, so I just, I just went and looked as far back as twenty twenty two, it's one sixty five. So quite honestly, I think part of the issue here is we didn't really look at it. We just set it to a large enough number. We didn't think it was an issue. In the last couple of years, the rent program has grown massively. We had a junior council program. We really maxed out our staffing to, you know, make sure that we had enough people. But I think, I think the base staffing level really should be known. We know how many people we're hiring, roughly what the rates they're paying are. So I think, you know, we can do a calculation and compare, you know, we have our data year over year. To be honest, I hadn't looked at it that close and then realized, oh, you know, oh man, we're fighting against it this year more so than we've been in the past. But it was one sixty five in twenty twenty two, it was one sixty five in twenty three. So I think we just had, taken a look at it. Here's the issue here. Else there.
Just to make Jeremy a question, can, from a sort of a, so we're going to be probably short this year. Can we treat this as a one-time increase in the cap and then revisit it at ATM in terms of more permanent for the next fiscal year?
So the way MGL works with revolving funds right now, absent the municipal empowerment act, is you need to vote, the town meeting, sorry, needs to vote the cap for each individual revolving fund each year. So the authority of a cap expires on June thirtieth. So what you vote now will have no impact on what's in the warrant. You know, will have no impact. It will, you know, drive Dan's request, but it doesn't, it doesn't hem you in for an indefinite amount of time, just, just the fiscal year.
So we can do something one time to get through this fiscal year and then the normal process for going forward fiscal, other fiscal years, right? Reset the cap at ATM.
Yeah, we set the cap, ATM sets the cap for every revolving fund every year for the upcoming fiscal year. Yes.
Yeah, so I'm sort of with you. My initiative, if ATM sets the cap, I'm not sure how we can reset the cap.
And yeah, that's why, that's why I went and looked it up. I looked it up because I trust Dan to be right, but it sounded, you know, like that's too simple of a vote for us. But mid-year, a joint vote can.
Sounds like it's for this exact situation.
So I would definitely do this and give you more supporting detail from the class that we submitted to. Then we came back and we're much closer on this. And the driver's payroll is going to be where we pass the difference.
And like your point about the investment choices of things that get fixed is more of a conversation back to the overall capital plan for the town. Not trying to, there needs to be an overarching authority.
Well, I'd want to treat, yeah, I mean, I'm going to treat parks just like we treat the library. They have a building maintenance budget and they identify what specifically they need to do and why they need the money. So a lot of these little things add to kind of bigger aggregate numbers for capital specific to parks. I'm not saying it's not worthwhile. I'm just saying we should have common oversight, I think.
Just want to add to, I mentioned in my email, but just hopefully if you're aware, in the bylaw, we can only spend up to ten thousand without, at one time, without a smart board or town meeting approval. So we can't go out and spend eighty thousand dollars on our new vehicle. That needs to formally go through the process. So there is, there is at least some level of, of kind of protection.
So fourteen thousand dollar driveway, you'd have to come to us?
So that's right. So if we, if we decide to pursue this, we'll have to, we'll have to package this and bring it to you or we'll put a warrant if we chose to. Right, we should have a price.
But to me, to me, it's more of mindful planning versus reacting to, we have a need, you know what I mean? So the more we get into that framework, I'm good.
This is, to be honest, this is the first time we've been in this position where, you know, if you look at the report, it's a chart, we can see it's finally, you know, we finally built this program up to a point that we actually have revenue available. You know, I think ten years ago, we were having, you know, shutting snack shack down, having to summer for banner money. You know, I remember working here as an employee and basically like, all right, we're done, we can't buy food. So, and now, now we're at this point, we need to approach it differently.
Well, I guess I'll just repeat what was said to you earlier, starting on a five-year roadmap, what's, what we need to be before, right?
Testament to the success of the program that you have.
Yeah, these are great problems to have, right?
Yeah, I think, and parks have been talking, we've had some conversations that need to be kind of about, about capital planning.
Dan, do you know if this account was set up as a fifty three E and a half or a fifty three D account under MGL forty four?
It's a, it's fifty three and a half. It's whatever the normal one is. I can look, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah, that's the.
It used to be, it used to be the weird parts that we changed.
Okay, that, yeah, the D is the one that the balance closes out to the general fund after ten thousand dollars. But if it's fifty three and a half, then we're all good.
Yeah. Whenever that law passed that you had to do your revolving tasks differently, I never had to switch it.
Perfect.
Is there, is there more from parks specifically?
I don't think so. I just.
Any more questions from the board? Jason, mine?
No.
Anything else from FinCom online?
Good here, thank you.
No, all set.
Alright, so then.
Could I, I believe, could I, unless you're not willing to, were you going to take a vote on that?
So we have it on the agenda. I mean, we could certainly that add order.
Okay, I just.
So yeah, we do have it on the agenda as item three. So like, but I think, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with doing that now. Plus Jeremy has any objections?
No, I think it makes sense to do now.
Okay. So the discussion is fresh in our minds. So yes, so we're going to jump forward so to item three, which is vote to increase park revolving fund expenditure cap for fiscal twenty twenty five. So I guess.
To what number?
Yes, that would be my next question. So yes, so.
It's what to say, so moved and then.
Right, so right there, yeah, so I, I don't have a draft motion here. So what, what is the number?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred even, okay. And then any, any additional comments on that, Jeremy?
I've, I've agreed with what folks have said here tonight about, you know, kind of dialing in what this looks like as a program and what it looks like tied into everything else. It, because of the flexibility of the cap gives, that wasn't really a primary objective of mine in this budget season, but it's definitely something that we need to focus on as an organization to make sure it adheres to all the same approaches as everything else. But I think two hundred thousand dollars based upon what Dan projects out through June makes sense.
So I mean, I move, we increase the recreation revolving account, FY twenty five cap to two hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, discussion, further discussion? Right, and then we need to do a roll call vote because we are hybrid. So Brugos, aye?
Aye.
Gaudet, aye.
Morales, aye.
Futter, aye.
Thank you. Alright, the motion passes. And then FinCom, you also, also I realized you were supposed to say the names of the people who are attending remotely, so it might be useful to do that before you call your vote.
So we have, uh, Ben Haddad, Zmudo, Jack Hodgens, and Jessica Curl from Finance Committee all online.
Thank you.
So, and I get a motion to increase the spending cap for parks to two hundred thousand?
Jack Hodgens, aye, so move.
Ron Zmudo, second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, we need to do roll call vote.
Hodgens, aye.
Zmudo, aye.
Curl, aye.
Billy Haddad, aye.
Mike Crager, aye.
Great, thank you. Right, so then we can return then to our budget presentations. So were there any more issues related to parks specifically? I know, I think, I believe there's were things related to parks and highway together. So are we ready to move on to that? Jeremy, are we any, are we at that point?
Yeah, I think that's a great way to keep, keep Dan at the table to be able to talk about this position. So we have, we have Highway Surveyor John Dudley here. We're going to talk about the highway budget writ large. We're going to talk about snow and ice, the current year deficit and what that looks like going forward in snow and ice removal. So first to kind of set the stage, we, we've, I've met with Dan and John separately, individually. They've met together. And the way this position is currently construed is at the heavy equipment operator foreman level within the highway union. It will be a facilities and grounds maintenance. You know, stylization of the title is, is up, up for debate, but the idea being that it, it will have oversight over the seasonal grounds maintenance people in the summer. It will, this position will report directly to the highway surveyor who will coordinate with the parks director on, you know, townwide needs. When the weather is nice and we have a lot of grounds works to do, it will be focused day to day sort of there, and then filling in those spots. And then when there's not as heavy as a demand, we'll focus on facilities, on preventative maintenance, on project management. You know, things that fall through the cracks right now that aren't quite somebody's role and responsibility would, would all fall here. And I think it's important to, you know, this is a, this is a position in the highway union and would report to the highway surveyor. So this person would also participate in the snow and ice program in the winter. So perhaps lessening either our reliance on contractors or the hours it takes to, to perform, you know, task X, Y, or Z. So I'll leave it to, to John and Dan to talk a little bit about more the needs for this position. And then we can all answer about the execution of it, but that, that's kind of the framing of our discussion here. So John and Dan, if you want to talk about what started this, the, the need for this position and how you envision it fitting in to your current departments?
Yeah, so I think, you know, so right now, I am the only full-time employee for parks. But previously we had Dick Joyner, who did the, we had part-time clerk, and we had Dick Joyner, who was part-time, who did the maintenance. When he retired, we combined and then made a full-time job. However, that means that I am the one going out, sitting on the lawn mower in the spring and the fall. I'm in. And at this point, we have reached the limits of what makes sense and is logical. We are barely keeping up, if not just drowning in terms of trying to keep up with maintenance of properties, you know, drunk on the park side of things. Not to mention all the other things that probably be that use of my time, higher level tasks. And I think we've reached the point that we need to explore creating a full-time position to take on this work. Plus all the additional opportunities to partner with highway, transition this position where it makes a lot more sense. You know, they have access to all the equipment, the training, the tools. I think that, that's a big part of it.
And they will also, like Jeremy said, snow and ice operation, you should put, they have a contract out, a few positions for us. And that will alleviate us having that as a separate role. That person would, it would be designed to be fact. You know, you said about the highway crew to do. And what happens to the person? We try to lose the task with Dan, this will just symbolize things. They would have everything in that highway garage at their disposal. They would have the required licenses to operate. Which would then leave them having to reach out to highway and say, hey, can we make them that go on an operator for the day? That person would.
Yeah, there's odd times when we're paying somebody to come with a machine unit, spread sand in the beach. Not to mention like, you know, days like today. Somebody could, you could go out and do some landscape work, you know, clearly brush before things start to pick up. Or if you had somebody year round, they could take on those projects in off-season. Whereas, you know, I spent today in my office sending a bunch of emails for staffing because that had to get done. Which means I didn't spend it outside. You know, it just, we've reached, I guess we've reached a point that we can't, it's not realistic to do what we're doing. You know, there's major demands and what we should be doing in terms of landscaping, caring for property, cemetery, just keeping track of all these things.
And a big part of this is, which we haven't touched on, is the facilities part. Right now, we don't have somebody for that, aside from Dan, Dan not having the time to do it. We have that lot of stuff that needs to be taken care of, but it cannot be focused on when time allows. Or there's emergency situations that person would be responsible for. I, we talked about it today, Mike and I, we used the furnace as, okay, the furnace in town hall wasn't up until Saturday. That person's coming in. They're going to be responsible for three votes. They're going to be responsible for getting that information to be, and we worked with Jeremy to get that procured, and then they're going to be responsible for overseeing the installation effort and making sure that it's working properly. Having someone to handle that stuff on all of our buildings. And I've had conversations. Fire Department's very interested in having this facility person be in charge of their building. And I said to them, let's starts, we're gonna start with the building we have, town hall annexed highway.
Well, no, I mean, what I'm hearing is town needs facilities.
I think this is what this is.
No, I know. It's not, I, I like to call myself Mr. Facilities. I kind of bring that up quite a bit. I know, I know. It's not, I, I like to call myself Mr. Facilities. I kind of bring that up quite a bit. Um, so, yeah, I, I hear you.
So. From my perspective, you know, it's only going to get worse, right? Because we're continually adding properties, maintenance, buildings. And, uh, I think this positions us to grow in the future.
And that was a great discussion as well as that, uh. This position's going to evolve. And three years from now, we keep talking about five-year plan, three years from now, we may be. At the position where we need somebody to step in, adjust the facilities, that have to split facilities and grounds.
And I mean, I was thinking about this, did driving the other day, it's kind of like what was done with the assistant traffic clerk or assistant town clerk type position. I think you said, future these position may split, but, you know, in the short term, we've got to get somebody in here to start working on some of this. Because it's just piled up.
So I hear some of this piling up. You have a whole backlog. Wha- what, what's all the, where are these things that are not getting done?
Um, well, I think so, I certainly.
So, I mean, I, I say that to make a point. To do something like this, you're untangling. Different roles and responsibilities from different positions. You know, and, and Jeremy, I'm not sure how far you've gone into this. But if this were a formal proposal, I would expect to see. What is Dan, I'll say Dan's role, I'll say park starter. What is, what is that role? What is this role? What's the overlap? What's not getting done that you're adding to these different, but I mean, we need, I would need to see job responsibilities, job profiles, et cetera. To have this type of discussion done and then understand, you know what I mean? So I'm not doubting there isn't stuff that can be done because I am all for bringing facilities into a more formal role for the town, absolutely. And I can, I love the idea of job sharing where we can kind of see some ROI by reducing contract services on winter months. All makes sense. But there, to me, to bring this forward for FY twenty six, I need personally, I, a lot more specific as to what are the new jobs? How does it fall into the comp class? I think I heard, which was good, it sounded like it's the equivalent of like the heavy equipment operator, foreman, stipend level. So that helps. Yeah, I heard that. That's good. But there's a lot of details that really need to be flushed out to kind of. For me to be able to make it, uh, uh, a decision as to, does it make sense? Can we get it in? Because this is going to be weighed against. Additional firefighters, additional library hours. I mean, there's a lot of asks.
To ask because there are running concerns in this position that helps.
So they're working.
We do both the exercise.
Yeah, I'm curious whether this is a position that other towns have and like how. The level of this position is, you know, I know we've had a lot of job. Like, we've been doing a lot of searches for, for many roles. So I guess that's another question is, is this the sort of position that you anticipate being able to fill? And, and we can say, well, there will need to be the, the licensing for the heavy equipment.
Absolutely. I think this is basically equivalent of the. Director of, you know, landscape maintenance type position that other towns have, like often under their DP dummy, there's somebody that's in charge of. The parks aspect of it. I don't exactly know their grade. So I think it lines up with that. And I, I think.
There's then it's a, a, uh. Highway and they call it park certain rounds, he is responsible for both.
See, what I like about it is very much in line with what we've talked about. Yes, organizationally, this sort of role is out there as something we all agreed. There's something that's needed here and you got it in more detail to say, it's actually fiscally, um, more viable by marrying it into, you know, the, the winter months. You know what I mean? So that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you. Something forwarding, like.
Yes, we made a presentation that.
Yeah, so, and, and this is sort of.
This is kind of.
Building on that refining that.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I do, I mean, there has been some internal interest, I think. It's a possibility that maybe internal candidate interested.
So you, so we started putting these lists of things that.
Yeah, and we struggle with parks attracting people because it's only a seasonal job. Where I have people that are looking for a full-time, you know, job with benefits, you know, that's, that's our problem. We're getting kids that are either high school or college. So they either, they can't work until the end of June. Or then we've got them later, but then they're off getting a real job. I mean, again, we're on such borrowed time. We're so fortunate that our person is able to return one more year, but he's graduated college. If he gets a job offer, we're at least going. And then we're, we've got a bunch of, you know, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids that legally can't even drive the truck. Um. To try and keep up with this. So I, I think it just.
That, that, but that's a different challenge, right? Because you still need staff to do the work you're describing there. This is a.
Well, what we're.
A higher level position.
Would be this position, I think we talked about this, uh, prior, that we would look to hire. So for this summer, we would keep the seasonal crew then because we're going to have to hire them to get them started. But long-term, you'd have one formal level position, and you'd hire two, like, college-age seasonal workers that would work like twenty weeks. That aren't high school kids.
Kind of being paid more than we're paying seasonal staff right now, so you bring in a different quality candidate.
So there's an increase in pay rate.
Well, because we're going from, we've gone from three, four, five.
Understood, understood. But I mean, I don't want to mix apples and oranges. The position you're talking about is the higher level position. It doesn't address the staffing. Challenges we might have with turnover on seasonal staff.
Well, I would argue that this, uh, professional, I don't know how to say it, you know, a professional person, this role could do this job by themselves. It wouldn't be great, it would be whatever, but having one person.
One person could maintain all of the, the town parks.
Maybe individuals, maybe out with a trimmer for three hours in the park.
That's what you do for two months in the spring.
But, right, my mom would already do it. So.
And so I will say that by putting this into highway, uh, this gives us the flexibility to say, okay. John Smith is, say, John Smith is this new position, you're now going to take on the other highway because there's a pro project that doesn't need four people. And that just comes back to the scheduling of the staff down there, which gives us that flexibility to do that.
Makes sense.
And now, now when I ask the guys.
Yeah, I need to give more context to the.
That, that brings up a different thing. So if you're rolling in parks-related work into the highway, would that, would that need to be collectively bargained in terms of jobs, drug rules? I would think it would. Because if they can say that today, they can say that tomorrow.
Yeah.
But it, that's, that's just something to be done. That's not a, no, oh, we can't do it. That's a consideration. You know what I mean? That's all.
Yeah, the, the.
It's on, it's on the list.
The parks are going to be a challenge because like, so Memorial Park, you get four or five people, one guy's in the mower, somebody's out doing trimming. You know, it's a little cemetery island. You don't necessarily need five people. So that it's, you know, whoever's staffing and we're doing, you know. Do best we can because you need a foreman and crew, but it can be done by a much more efficient, higher skilled level crew.
Right. So when I hear foreman and crew, that sounds like the execution work. So Jeremy, when we've talked about facilities in the past. A facilities manager, do you see that being a different role than what we're talking about? Because I look at facilities management is buildings. Town parcels, it's town facilities, which includes fields. Now, they may not be mowed on, but they would be managing the process.
Yeah, the. I think because the, the mowing the lawn piece and the landscaping piece is so much more labor-intensive, it involves that crew for the execution piece. Uh, but when we're talking about facilities writ large, right, like, um, the boiler question that John had, or the, you know, the compressor on the mini-split issue that we're having right now that. You know, just, we don't have the, the time in the week to be able to fully, um, drive to completion. That would be something that this person can execute on their own outside of having seasonal staff associated with it. Um, you know, doing, building envelope studies and all of that kind of thing, um, is, is more solo work.
So like the line items for site improvement, the light project from Memorial Field, that would all fall under, fall under a facilities manager's role?
Yeah, that's how I would envision it. Yeah, it would be cross-departmental. So there would be a little bit of budget resizing, um, to say, you know, right now. You know, responsibility for elevator inspections falls on the library director. And like, he doesn't have his degree to like go. Do that. So we would take the money from library associated with that and put it in whatever, however we construe a facilities budget, and this person would be responsible for elevators all over town. Um, that sort of thing.
And that's a different role than what we're talking about here that I just described. Or is it the same role in your mind?
I think this gets, uh, so right now we, we have a parks, we have a, a programmatic parks director who also does facility ex, or also does like, um, grounds execution. Uh, and then we don't have any sort of facilities execution apart from the departmentalized, balkanized approach that we do it. So what this position is, is it takes those kind of. Non-core skillset stuff away from department heads who just happen to exist in a building, and it, it creates part of a position for facilities. And then it takes the execution of, of grounds maintenance away from the parks director, and it kind of marries those two things together in one position. And that frees the parks director up to do, um, you know, what we'll kind of list out as bullet points, but to focus more on programmatic aspects, um, of the parks execution. So. I want to be clear that this is not going to be, you know, rev-expense neutral. It's not like we can take all the money in contract services right now and fund this entirely. This is, we're, we'll be doing things that we either don't currently do to their full extent or aren't currently doing at all. So it will be a, a increase in productivity, um, that comes with an increase in expense. It will be offset in part by a decrease in contracted expenses, but it's certainly not going to be one-to-one.
I, I think we got to be really, really, really mindful and careful going forward as you describe it, Jeremy, because. You know, when we say it's, it's not exactly everything I said today, but it might be tomorrow. But it's a, it's, it's a, a collectively bargained position within the highway. Union, you know, taking that work away is not something that's necessarily, you can't just do that. So as we, if we think about this, this is a longer term. Not longer, I'm not, I'm, it could be FY twenty six. I'm not saying that, but I think this would be a lot more detailed thought put into how we were actually going to execute this today. And in two years from today, and specifically, what are the roles and responsibilities of each position? Because that's what the comp study is doing for us now. We're getting definition on job descriptions, roles and responsibilities. And we're untangling, you know, some thing, clarifying some roles that I think makes sense, like possibly creating a foreman position versus a stipend. Those are good things. I just want to kind of make sure we're, it's mindful on this ask as we're on, what we already started in that study. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think the, um, unit work question is, is, is big on this, um, and it's a good point to bring up. Um, I see the two halves of this as both being covered by, you know, a collective bargaining agreement, and then what a future redefinition would look like would be to take those kind of two halves and create two roles. Um, and it's still be within, um, uh, covered by the collective bargaining agreement. So it wouldn't be taking away, uh, union work. It would, I think, be creating an additional position to, you know. In this five, I'm using five like everyone else's, this five-year plan, um, to say what, what are our needs going forward?
I would say, I, I hear you, but I would, as I see a facilities manager role, that would not be a, a union job. That's a management, senior-level management job, no? Would that, I mean, it could be in, but I wouldn't expect that to be in the union. I'd be the equivalent of that John's role.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of positions here in town that I wouldn't expect to be in a union, and they are. Um, so, yeah, that is kind of a broader discussion, I think.
Okay.
I mean, what I'm hearing is that, that I thought there was a discussion around creating a, a many DPW, right? At some point, this feels like a step towards that without actually. Going full bore into a plan like that. So I don't know, this. The need is, I, I think, I understand the need is clear. I'm totally confused about roles and responsibilities and who's doing what and everything else. So I'd love to see it written on paper. But this feels like a step towards trying to get to a DPW, which we clearly probably need, uh, without actually doing that. So in the terms of. Longer planning and where does Men didn't want to go, I'd want to know what is our end goal state for these two departments? In terms of who owns what and how do these roles align with those goals?
Okay. Definitely, definitely we have more conversations we need to have. I mean, we haven't.
Yeah, the other thing is, I just have to say this, I don't want to, I, I agree with that, and that's what we need to get, but I, I also don't want to. You know, make no change until we make this massive change when there's a need now that isn't going to be addressed in three years, if we figure that.
Yeah, I agree. Um. I also, to all the union discussion, I have absolutely no idea how to solve those into. When can we do these types of positions? Do we need to wait for contracts to get them to do something?
Yeah, but that's, that question also, I mean, with the, with the, this bargaining need to be really open?
So we would, we would do a.
As if I wanted to do it right now, we're finally.
Yeah, we could do a side letter, um, in the midst of a contract. We can, you know, generally when you say to a union, can we add another position to you guys, the, the answer is usually yes. Um, so.
I don't know, all of my interactions with unions, you never know which way it goes, right? I'm not going to assume anything is easy.
This is a recorded line, so I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so I also recognize the need, I mean, that, um, the. There's work that needs to be done. There's work that's been, you know, it's not, you know, Dan is doing a lot of work that. Uh. Ideally as parks director, he would not, he would not necessarily be doing all the mowing because, you know, he has other things that he needs to do. And I know, like, I, I really like. The creativity of, of making this be a year-round position that be both, you know, parks, which is sort of. Spring, summer focused, and then, you know, halfway getting the snow and ice removals, so which, you know, there's not as much perks activity going on. In the winter.
Could be more facilities.
Right, so, so that, and I know, right, facilities also, right, is, you know, Mike has brought this up a lot, facilities. Is key, and I think there is potential cost savings for the town because we keep having. Crises, I think, sort of the things break and then it's a crisis and it always costs more to deal with a crisis than it does to do the maintenance. Um, so I mean, I, I feel like it, it does. Like, it does make sense, but I guess logistically, I, I, you know, I do see, yeah, I guess. Yeah, it, it, to Mike's point, it's, it'll be good to see more of this laid out. I know you, you mentioned the Collin Center is working on a, on a job description. Um.
Yeah, but at the same time, is it looking at?
For this new, this proposed new position, yeah.
Yeah, but is it looking at reforming what like your job description would be, or I know you're doing things that are probably public beyond, is written in your description. And maybe this is just more of a step towards actually only doing what's on the job script, right?
Well, so, you know, we have to do one for parks, one for water, one for this. I mean, I'm just saying to myself, we need, need to help them make a chart of those essential functions and under each position so you can see across. What they are for each employee. Um, you know, but.
Along the big org chart with a link to a job description, do a stack of the expectations.
Jeremy, I know I'm asking this, but can you remind us when the comp class study will be complete and when we'll get a report on that?
Yeah, it's kind of a moving target because it, um, involves surveying other communities. So there's a really wide window in which we would expect to get answers. Um, but we've completed all of the surveys, the interviews, and our consultant at Collins right now is compiling draft job descriptions for us. Um, and then we'll have meetings, talk about those, uh, any questions and revisions we have back. Um, so we're looking at, you know, June-ish. Um, we'll have it, um, but I anticipate having it by the end of the fiscal year, not that we're in a bargaining cycle right now. Um, but the, the classification piece, um, will have hammered out bef, we need to have hammered out before we do the compensation piece. Um, so that, that might inform this a little bit better.
One of our goals is an org chart.
Right.
Yeah. Close out the Collins orb design work we did. I wonder if we need to kind of look to accelerate that very soon after, as part of this budget discussion. So we. Understand conceptually, not the specifics maybe, conceptually, what does the town operations look like?
Yeah. Yeah, I had understood one of the goals to be, um, part of the budget book or budget presentation, ultimate budget presentation to include an org chart. So Katie and I have been going back and forth with that, talking with department heads on. Um, because we're, we're envisioning it, right, as a, of what does a fully-staffed organization look like? Not necessarily what the organization looks like right now. So even if, um, yeah. Even if there's, you know.
Some vacancies.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, we would, we would still continue to keep those in our organizational chart.
Yeah.
John, you expect, uh, so one of the job requirements is probably going to be CBL coming in. Do you expect any issue with that? I know before we had to give CBL a lot of just to get people, you know, coming with that as a young.
I don't, because I think you're going to get, if you make this facilities and grounds and not highway, you're going to get a different. I would say type of quality, but you're going to have people that are looking, go like, oh, great, I don't have to be a seasonal landscape person anymore, I can bring up grounds. You have to work on the facilities. So I think it's going to draw a different group of people to apply for this position as opposed to what we're getting from our company.
Yeah.
Are they likely to have some licensing or they would, they would? What is the time frame for?
A lot of landscapers have a listing license and CBLs. Big landscaping companies like Franny's or. Big companies like that, they will, their guys have CBLs and the listing.
Good to know. Yes, I guess I I do, yeah, I do have questions about how this will fit in with that bigger. Comp class study, so.
Yeah, I think whatever we do, we have to make a step on the beginning.
Right. I know, well, so this is, you know, the discussion is about. Budget, so I mean, I think, I guess what is? So this would be budgeting for a new position. Does the new position need to be created before we can? Request that from the town?
It currently exists within the recognition clause of the highway. Highway unit as a highway, as a heavy equipment operator foreman, um it would then be creating a job description. And, you know, posting that, um but we have, we have. The kind of legal structure of the position, this is asking for the funding.
Okay.
And the type of position that we are thinking about. And setting our funding basis on, I guess that. Compensation is commensurate with. Where we want this position to be morphed into? Like, there's a, there's a current standing position that has a job description that we are looking to morph into taking on.
The described. Of the foreman within the highway department, similar job salary grade level.
Just to do a committed, you commit a starting heavy equipment operator pay plus a dollar an hour per.
But it would be a different title, a different job description, because it's facilities and landscape.
Yeah, you're taking fucking.
Heavy equipment operator, so like we have a heavy equipment operator mechanic. We have a heavy equipment operator foreman.
But but the salary grade level is going to be commensurate with the foreman within highway, because they have foreman-like duties in terms of managing seasonal staff to. Execute landscaping.
Yeah.
But then they've got individual contributor roles where they're actually going to be. Doing facilities maintenance and or then managing contract resources to do larger jobs.
So so how I would expect this classification to study to come back is to say the current foreman we have. Um, it can be stylized kind of two ways. The current foreman we have can be the the foreman assigned to the highway crew, and this will be the foreman assigned to the facilities and grounds crew. Or this is a general foreman, and that's a working foreman, and there is differences between the two. And I'm not sure how they're going to come back and how um the general market trends are relative um between them. Um, but there's, you know, we we can, we can have the foreman role assigned to a specific work type.
But Jeremy, you'd agree, though, to Mike's question, this is more of a s- of of a role that is going to be commiserate to what's needed day one, not necessarily to be morphed to in. Two years. Do you use the term morphed into?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what the morphing time is, if that's.
But but two, but it's 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 what's needed now, not necessarily. What might be envisioned in the future. It's not, it may not be miserable, to use your term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think that's certainly an exposure that we have. Uh, we we had, this was envisioned to solve the problems that we are currently facing, yes.
To this position, they're gonna run into the same sort of issues on the tail end, like spring as you are currently, Dan. Like, eh, there's gonna be a gap between when the grass stops growing and when they lose their seasonal help. Do you expect that, or do you think? It's gonna be a little bit better?
No, I think, um, I mean, yeah, there'll be a smaller gap. You know, that's, I mean, I'm happy about, no, that's not unattainable. It's just, I'm going on spending five or six hours a week just sitting on a lawn. Versus having employees' job is to sit on five, they can just do that, that's not, that's their job.
Right. Um, whereas you're trying to get.
You know, and there's some role with these, you know, once we figure out. Dive into the seasonal, the one who expand that season, that nice, it keeps us under the limit for sure during unemployment. So that won't be your ideal. But I think, you know, in 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 the slower season, it's much easier for one person to do. It's in the heat of the season when there's all trimming and all the fencing and everything crazy.
Yeah.
And like John mentioned, you know, this opportunity, I think, to share, you can steal somebody from having the day for this one. Larger property, but then they can go on the cemetery by themselves.
Unless they don't want to do it.
Why, I I do think by combining this one, it changes that conversation. To be able to say this is our department versus go do some other department's work. I think it's a different conversation.
I still want to understand if there's going to be a blockage of. That's not my job, even after this gets created in some way, if it's not created as this dual purpose.
But I thi- I think it's, it needs to be discussed and reached, but once that's done, then you have a single department. And you have, you know, but until that's done, they have the opportunity to say, that's not my job. That's a reality. But that's, I think Jeremy even said that's on the list of things to. Deal with.
Yeah, yeah, the CBA tie-in is definitely, you know, um first and foremost. The collective bargaining agreement tie-in first and foremost on on getting this defined, and then, you know, the. The job description, um and then where it ends up in the compensation classification study, so. Just from a execution. Of this budget, so, um, you know, we could, if this position was, you know, approved, you know, in the recommended in May. Uh, we couldn't actually hire somebody and have have them start until July. So um this isn't kind of where I was intending to go tonight, but perhaps um this kind of future planning. Uh, because that's not something I envisioned with this position yet. This was a a kind of immediacy sort of response. Um, is perhaps uh we can have longer discussions on this outside of a um. Specific budget meeting, get an appropriation, come to whatever the agreement is and get an appropriation at special town meeting to hire someone for spring of twenty six. So we get kind of half the fiscal year um usability out of this role. Uh, but we're, we get to a position where we feel like we refined it um a little bit better, rather than having an up or down, yes or no vote, you know, next Tuesday, when we come and meet again. Um, that we have a little bit more um. Um, from the compensation and classification study.
I mean, I think what makes sense, and we've talked about it both with what Dan and John presented to us, and we in our own offsite, is looking at. You use the term DPW, but sort of look at some of that uh work. And and combining under a team, an organization, which is sort of what you've done. So really, the the big thing in my mind is. Defining the Parks Director, because that, to me, is the work that's not getting quote done to relim- moving Dan out of. The parks day to day, so he can maintenance parks maintenance. To do the Parks Director job as should be done. That's that's the sense I get. So we might be. A lot of this might be overcomplicated. What we're really talking about is. Redefining what John. Organization does to include facilities, management, maintenance. And segregating parks to a separate, to the parks directive role to be that, which should really be defined. And you're adding staff. That's really all we're doing, right? We're segregating and adding a a body within, under the purview of John to allocate between. Seasonally to where work needs to be done, which could be managed by your workwear system.
It's already preloaded.
Well, that might be.
That is a much, thank you for pulling that together.
Well, I guess, I mean.
So that's a great start. Right now, I know we're doing the right, but right now, somebody came to me and asked me, like, oh, what's this position? I right now, I. Like, I know, there's lots of work that's not getting done, lots of work needs to get done, we need people to manage some things, do some things. But I really don't know how to describe this stuff. So I don't feel comfortable at the moment even being able to say whether I would have the position. Reiterate it or not, but I understand that helps, but I would love to see some written down roles and responsibilities. Start with the work, what work is not getting done, what work needs to get done, what positions do we believe need to be put in place or roles managed. And were created in order to get that work done, right? But start with the work. And then what are the people around us to get that done?
Even the anecdotal stuff to what Elena brought up, what are the things that have cost the town money due to um? Ignoring that that would have been. Mitigating risk, right?
Yeah.
So we have this this incurred cost that we could mitigate. By implementing this type of role, you know, that that would be, just looking backwards, saying. You know, Dan, you might know better than most, if we had just done that, if we had replaced all the asbestos pipe, we could, you know what I mean? But things like that, that, you know, looking back. You know, that would be a good supporting.
Think also, considering, sorry, Jason, I know you have your hand up, but considering also the the work that is taking time from other. Department heads in their facilities, right? So like, um, so not. So it it takes time from their jobs, it's not their primary job. So, for example, the library director, the senior center director, the.
To be honest, facilities either goes to Dan or comes to highway. That's that's our work right now.
Well, because there is no facilities.
Right, so any any facilities issue either goes to him or comes to us.
As well, dealing with, I know, like. I mean, I know, and I don't know if you're envisioning that this would encompass. The library and all the facilities, because I know that the library has has like issues with their elevator, issues with their the. Their like their plumbing, issues with their lighting, like all these crises that come up.
The way that I see it now, just so that if this position happens, we are starting out. Every town building excluding police and fire.
Okay.
Until we get this position established and things are running smoothly, fires already expressed an interest in having a facilities person. They have, but believe one person on their staff that is responsible for their facility at this time. Uh, I don't, I haven't had a conversation with Chief Perry on whether he would like. A facilities person handle those things, but. Uh, it would be pretty much every town building excluding those two to start.
Me talk with St. Andrew, because I know like when his his director's report often includes a lot of facility.
I have not talked with him, but I know I've been in the past to talk to him, but I do think, I'll speak for him, I think there would be interest out of her. Asking, you know, when you say roofing issues.
Right, I mean, it's 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 been a lot, I mean, yeah.
You know, I think what comes up, it gets dumped on Katie too, of just like, you know, gee, who do we call, what do we do, because now this is broken.
We need facilities.
Yeah.
And I I I'm not, before I say anything else, I'm gonna let Jason ask, he's had it there longer than me.
Jason, go ahead.
Uh. So I just wanted to restate what Mike just said. Uh, about what's being asked here. I just wanted to clarify. Because because nobody answered him when he, when he said this is what's happening. And so I'm just gonna restate it, and Mike, you can clarify if I'm wrong, but. Uh, are we looking here to move Dan to a a a more creative? And um director level uh position and increase. The managerial responsibility of John, like, are those the two real things that we're talking about? That's what Mike had just said. And I and I wanted to get that on the table, that, you know, we understand, I think, the complexity here, but I just wanted to boil it down. Is that the two things we're really looking for?
Yes, it moves the Parks Director into a more administrative role, uh rather than a. Manual labor one, um and then it takes that. Portion um of responsibilities, has it in highway under the control of the highway surveyor.
All right, and and so then I wanna back up what Jeremy had just proposed. Uh, which is to to go about and and time box ourselves into a resolution to this, because this isn't the first time we've had this discussion. It's the we've the multiple nth time we've had this discussion. So I'd like to try to hem the board into. Saying that we would commit to to doing what we've just said, which is take that. Information that we're we're getting about how compensation and org uh fit together and commit to put that on. A special town meeting so that we have this ready for next season. And just how are we, how are we able to do that? Is there a way for us to make sure that happens?
Can it, can I make it time bound differently, not differently, because I like that idea, but. But I want, I want a time bound getting information back so we can be very clear as to what the specifics are about what we just summarized. So so then Ja- Jason, we can actually be ready for either ATM possibly or STM in the fall. Um, because I still think we've summarized it, but the devil's in the details in this one. You know, not just the actions to make sure collective bargaining is taken care of, but what are the specific roles we're talking about? Because. John, if you would kind of say, I think with one additional body, highways can support the day to day maintenance of. Um, high the streets and the the landscaping of of town parcels. Don't even think about buildings yet. That would have been a prime, a different discussion than what we just had, you know what I mean? Because I'm also big on incremental changes. This is one I don't want to be incremental. If we need a facilities manager. Let's create the facilities manager role and bring in that level of expertise, and that's different in my mind than. The staff that needs to execute the work that's being managed and coordinated, you know what I mean? And that could still be within the same what I just heard. I mean, there's no reason why you need two separate groups of offer. You have a. You know, a a team of people with different job descriptions, different grade levels. That is managed by the potential highway, I guess, surveyor, superintendent, whatever the role is going to be, right? Within that, and you've got possibly an individual contributor that is, the thing about facilities and buildings is I think there's more there than we even know. So it may not be just, this one person may not be able to support it all. And rather than talking about morphing in this one, it's too critical, and I want to say we need facilities role. Pure and simple, whether it's engaging on contracts, vendors. So so Dan, you're not doing the lighting on the memorial field, and your staff would not be executing lighting on the field. Nor would I expect you to manage the project of putting lighting in a memorial field. That, to me, is a facilities. Person, does that make sense? I just think. This is a big one, and I don't want to actually go halfway on facilities, create the role as we think we need it to be, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so this is definitely the incrementalist approach that I um. That's kind of how we kind of thought we could get there. Um. But I think. In spreading out the time in which you could be able to to be able to put together a formal proposal, kind of be a little more creative on some. Just as I'm thinking now, right, if what you just said, Mike, about does one full-time person, HEO, not a foreman level, does one full-time person cover the. Grounds sort of work, and then, you know, a nineteen-hour-a-week person in the select board office covers the facilities work or s- some other combination. There are, there are ways to approach this.
Yeah.
Brendan?
Yeah, I just have had one comment, and I don't disagree with anything. Um, I just want to be really careful that I don't spend another year waiting while we're planning. Um, before we actually get some relief to people that are doing work. That's all I want to say.
I would suggest making it a fiscal twenty six select board goal to have a resolution to the facilities and maintenance position within the fiscal year. And that kind of pins it on me um to make sure we have something for special town meeting to be able to fund a role for the spring.
Does that, does that make you guys whole? It's the question, like, that's six months away.
It's six months away and it's six months on the busiest season of the year.
We do have, you know, Brian is able to come. Again, if he gets, you know, your job offer, engineering jobs, coming, you know, coming down the road. He he might leave us, you know, we do have people returning, it just. You know, I would hate to see us just wait and wait on this, you know, and if there's a commitment to really come up with a plan and have something that we can. Because one of the challenges is trying to hire this position, you know, July one is midway through our season. So, you know. If we could have something rock solid and we know we can post this job and have this position filled in December or January. So we're going into that next year from the beginning, ready to go. That does have some that, but it just, as I said, we have to do something.
Right, so so is, so Mike, I think you brought up the idea that it would be a different conversation if we were just talking about someone. In highway who is also doing grounds maintenance, and it's the facilities part that.
Well, it was just good, I I mean, I think, I think um. There's a difference between increasing staff to execute the work, whether it's landscaping and or minor building facilities, then. A role of facilities management.
Right.
Which is more proactive and future focused, things like that.
But I guess it, right, so I guess to Brendan's point, the need for an additional staff person is immediate for like the coming. Coming seasons, right?
Yes, we're we're running our crew with with seasonal high school and college age kids. They're doing the best they can. They're certainly not bad by any stretch, but what we're able to get done is limited. I think we, you know, we ran into an issue last year that I think opened us up to realize that, you know, maybe things could be done a little better than they are. Um, you know, I don't think.
But the seasonal.
It's not a crisis, but it's.
The seasonal staff doesn't go away in in this scenario, you still have the same. The seasonal staff doesn't go away in, in this scenario. We still have the same sixteen.
So, you can't have a sixteen-year-old kid who never suits a vision. What we need is I need somebody that I can say, go mobile over field and have all the instruction that they need. I don't have to give them explicit direction of exactly what fence to trim. And like, I need somebody that is told to use a lawnmower and understands that needs cut all the rest. If that makes sense, like, and then hire them to say like, hey, I need you to go call three HVAC companies. I guess, I, you know, John will be saying this, you know, call three HVAC companies, get three prices to replace the mini split. I need to explain to you.
Right. But the, but the role we hire has to.
Seasonal kids not to.
Right? I mean, basically this role is replacing what you do as far as landscaping.
It's placing a chunk in my position.
A chunk of your position, right? That's fair. So whoever sits in that seat still, I wanna make sure we're addressing the right problem. It. Both problems. I see different problems. I say your seasonal staff. Needs real hands-on direct management, which maybe you cannot provide a hundred percent of the time today, because it's a split role for you.
Right.
So this new role would be able to provide that oversight that they need. But you've still got the same sixteen, seventeen-year-old seasonal staff executing.
Right. So maybe I'm using, that's, that's the, I'm just, you know, turning. You know, crew leadership, you know, who is great, but he's, you know, he's doing, doing what he have, what he has. Whereas if you fill that with a full-time position, ideally somebody with experience. They can then direct those kids, because in June, July, I'm not out for them.
Okay, so you've got, you've got, you've got a seasonal supervisor managing the, the, the landscaping.
Uh, maintenance crew lead, I think is the title right now. You know, so this position, you know, this position takes on that in a broader sense, on top of all these other responsibilities, which is what justifies their existence. Then there, there's no rest. Cause there's tons and tons of other work they can take. You know, like, you know, we just need some emergency bikes. Now we need to go touch with all the paint.
I'd, I'd be careful with this idea that maintain facilities is seasonal. No, no, but I mean. But can, can that stuff that's wait till the winter when the sea, the landscaping's not being done, or does that need to be done immediately? Now you've got. Well, no, but, okay, but, all right, I'm good. I mean, my, my point is. Landscaping is seasonal. Grass grows during certain months. You can plan for that. Facilities. So, it's not.
People have two jobs that, that's the solution here. Oh, just, I just, my experience is that. The only way we're gonna get someone that's gonna be with us is, is to have that opportunity to have full-time benefited positions. This was a good way to do that. You know, maybe they do, should be two positions, because they're too different.
Well, I mean, I like the idea of having two foremans within the John's organization. More generically, their foreman roles and, yeah, I think Jeremy, you said it could be landscape or highway, but. It's sort of similar type of form and role, something like that.
Jason and both have.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, is it possible to compromise with a temporary position with potential? Full-time once it's clarified? Is that, is that something that you would see as an opportunity that would be available? Someone out there to take? Would somebody be willing to trust us to wait to do such a thing? Is there a balance there? Just wanna throw that on the field.
That has proved difficult in recruiting for other positions to say it's part-time now, it may be full-time later. Um, because the folks who only want part-time don't wanna come in for full-time, and a lot of the folks who are looking for full-time aren't gonna trust an organization they don't know. Um, so I, I get that what we presented here was kind of incrementalist in nature, but I think the part-time, full-time designation makes. Uh, your candidate pool difficult.
Yeah, so it, it seems to me that there's, there's, there's two different issues going on here, right? There's the, the, the long-term discussion that we've had for quite a while about restructuring. Uh, you know, parks and highway, which is not gonna get solved tonight, but there is a, a clearly what, what's rapidly becoming a crisis. Uh, especially with the vote we just took to increase the cap, because you know, there's even more activity within parks. Uh, I mean, my question is to, to both Dan and John and, and Jeremy. What is it you need immediate now to get us um? To handle that increase that maybe we, clearly we should have done a while ago, but something we could solve immediately. Cause I don't, I don't see us being ready to make any kind of a, a voter or decision on the management piece right now. I mean, I know there's still outstanding pieces um, from the Collins study and other pieces we need to dig in. So we can be prepared in a special town meeting, but is there a vote we can take now to um? To give some relief to the issues that Dan just spoke about, about, you know, having to have a full-time person that is more independent. Rather than being, uh, you know, spoon-fed various instructions throughout the day over the whole uh, summer season.
I don't know, maybe we can chat and come back and say.
I think you've got two positions and one of them you should, is the uh, foreman. I mean, when you describe the, that you have a supervi- supervisor of a landscape crew that needs constant direction and that position is the one that's full-time. That makes sense to me, as I hear that. You know what I mean? Cause that's not necessarily Dan. That is, you have a part-time per seasonal person that's brought in to supervise people.
Let's be the director of the current highway.
No, 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 Dan, I was gonna go back to what you said. You said there's somebody that you hire seasonally that's responsible for managing the landscape crews. Right?
And working by themselves too.
Sure, but I mean, that, that, that.
That's the, you know, so that's, that's the position. That is not necessarily fifty-two weeks, forty hours a week of work. But if you don't offer benefits, you're not getting somebody. The way to get to that number of hours is to give them more responsibilities.
But don't, isn't it, isn't it pretty clear to everybody that between this, this seasonal position? That Dan just described and the additional work that needs to be done with facilities throughout the year. That there's clearly a need for a forty-hour-a-week, fifty-two-week-a-year position beyond um.
Yes.
You know, the seasonal position that we have right now.
I'd say there's work there, Mike. I'm not sure I understand the structure if it makes the most sense.
I, no, I, I'm in, I'm in a perfect agreement with you that, that, I, I'm not sure what the structure is either. But I, I think we've got, I think what we can't do right now is just say we're gonna study it some more. Um, I think we need to study it some more, but I think we need to take some immediate action to relieve some of the um. Immediate pressure, unless I'm misreading what's being said here or what's going on. If I'm, if I'm, if, if I misunderstood it. Please, you know, tell me.
Information do you got? So that you can make a decision on this, specifically what information? You wanna know what things he's gonna be able to do now with that, those responsibilities?
No, I don't, no, I, I'm not asking that question. What I'm asking is, is there? It, I mean, clearly there's enough uh, full-time work for the season. But my question is, do, do you, do you agree that there is enough work um, between? Um, you know, what's not getting done frankly? Um, there's enough work that if we were to add another full-time person. Rather than just hiring this seasonal, part-time person, that, you know, we would.
It, it's, it's, it's.
Are you, are you asking this for parks specific or are you asking for facilities and graphics?
Well, uh, I, I guess, I guess, uh, I, I don't think we can answer the question, that question formally. Until we, we have a proposal to look at. And it's not something, and that's not something that, and that's not something that we can do. From the discussion that we've just had for the last hour.
Right. So that's what I was just asking, Mike. What information do you need from both a grounds, facilities standpoint to make a decision on this? So one, we know we need.
Yeah, what I would want is.
We need Dan's.
To answer your question, I, I need to see a plan. I need to see a proposal. Cause I think you, you and Dan with, with Jeremy's help should be able to formalize it.
That's, and this is what I'm trying to get, the information you wanna see in that plan. Those are the possibilities.
Right, that, and that's, it sounds like there, that's.
You see, you've got lots of work for both sides.
What's that?
Example of, yeah.
Examples of work that we could, is being neglected now that can be taken care of.
Maybe like a calendar view of sort of work that would be done.
No, I think, John, if you're. If, if you're asking me, what I would suggest is that you, you know, put a job description together. And then if you wanna provide examples of what that it would entail, so we can say, this is the, this is the job that we're proposing, this new position. Or at least these are the, the, the effort that needs to be done. And then you go back with the town administrator and create this proposal and give it to us. So we can approve it um, or change it. But I, I think what we've done here is discuss. I, I don't think anybody would disagree that there's a need. We've known this for a while, but we need to quantify it. So we can actually take a vote, but we don't have enough information right now to just go ahead and tell you to go out and hire somebody, I, I don't think, in, in a management role. Cause we still don't know how we're gonna put this all together.
When do you need the information, Mike, to make a decision to make this happen for July first?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
There's the answer. That, that's a, Jeremy, he hit the nail on the head. I don't think we can do that by Tuesday. I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
You're not talking tomorrow, you're talking next Tuesday.
Yeah, sorry, a week from tomorrow. I just thought today was Wednesday since we're all together.
Well, have something for you for next Tuesday.
And it, to me would be understanding parks director, what that is, and that would be a lot of the stuff that's not done today that. You, you, you're trying to get to, Dan, and you know, the, the layout of this, this, this foreman level position, you know? I mean, that's, and then facilities, I don't know if you can quantify or tell us what's not getting done in facilities. But if you, if you, you know, you put a specific umbrella, this is what we're seeing day one, but possibly expanding across the town day two. That's your proposal, that's your proposal. I think the job descriptions and roles responsibilities, understand, those are the biggest things. So now we freed up Dan, what's our parks director gonna deliver in terms of value to the town? Program, I'm guessing, but you know, that's another thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I just, I, sorry, the, the display didn't show your hand up. It just showed the different color blocks around you.
Okay. Um, uh, uh, I, I did see that um, during the conversation here. That there's a facilities manager position currently being advertised for the town of Born that runs. Something on the order of magnitude of about five pages long in terms of its job description. Perhaps that may be a good starting point here for, you know, what, what you'd wanna add or detract from what's being advertised there. I think it was touching on actually a number of the items that were being described here by the, by the board. In terms of what the scope of the, of the position would entail in terms of the uh. Um, the, the buildings, the grounds, what was the expectation in terms of the um? For example, the energy at the facilities, uh, the access to the facilities, et cetera. So it may be a good starting point, because I, as, as I was listening to the conversation here, I know the. Board has spent a great deal of time and energy discussing this, but I think that, you know, not having something on paper. It becomes exceedingly challenging to keep up.
Jack, can you mail that out?
Happy to.
Jason, I see your hand up again.
Just before we close that point, that, that position I think pays about twenty dollars an hour more than we pay.
Okay.
The, the one in Born, it's advertised about forty, forty-something bucks an hour, yeah. So it sounds like you've already got it, Jeremy.
I, yeah, I think so. Um, but yeah, sure, sharing it would be great. Thank you.
Happy to.
Jason?
I was just gonna ask John if you could just get that out as early as possible for feedback. Maybe we could cut down on the length next time. You know, even if you've got something drafted someplace, yeah, send it out as early as possible. Don't wait till Tuesday.
I have something by the weekend.
I, I just put something on the counter for us to touch base, uh, Dan and John, uh, Thursday. So we can get together on the front end and then to kind of refine something.
And then, I mean, so we, both boards are meeting again uh, a week from Tuesday. So it's the idea that we would hear about it more during that meeting. So that, that meeting is going to be our budget wrap-up meeting. So I guess we can sort of take that information and. Help us have, help us decide what will actually be in this uh, in the budget. I said, this, if we're talking about highway. This would be the highway salaries effectively. But the proposal you talked about was, it was in.
It was fine.
Because it was in the highway marketing unit, it would be in. I feel like uh, we still have other uh, highway department related things to talk about. So I guess, there were a lot of questions. Uh, so it, it sounds like we'll have, uh, maybe people could also email questions that come up. To um, for additional clarification. Um, so I would love if we could move on and talk about the other highway. Thank, thank you for bringing this forward. I think really it's, yeah, there's a lot to talk about. Are you, are you, sorry, done with us now? Alright, Dan.
Oh, I'm just gonna, I'm laying downstairs. You still need it?
Doesn't charge it all that fast.
Wait for John to come back. With silence.
Jeremy, quick question on the salary, salaring wages for highway that's under FY twenty-six for highway. Does it, does it include that position we just discussed?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the big jump, as we've discussed from other, from other ones, is that the four percent was not included in twenty-five.
I'm going to highways, but let's move on.
Alright, John, are you ready then?
Sure. Yep, take it home, please. Um, just wanna fill you guys in on a couple of things that have happened. The past, say, six months, two years. With the money that was given to us, the extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars where you're able to get two major roads. Caved in the spell, which we're in dire need. With this year's additional money, we're gonna look to do that third major road, which is Hartford Avenue East.
And when you say extra money, this was the money voted on at town meeting?
That's the money, yes, it's on the, at town meeting.
Right.
So we're looking to do Hartford Avenue East before July first. That's gonna use up above what we have, or maybe a little bit left over. There was a memo that came out recently and Jeremy, you might have been funny, you might have, but it was basically. Governor Haley's office said that we may be getting additional funding for chapter ninety this year. If it goes through our law, then mine would go from roughly two seventy-five, couldn't believe it was four fifty-nine. So we're gonna start planning once we know what we're getting. Uh, we did receive our news, we were. That four hundred and nine includes the money that was allocated or?
That's wrong, the chapter ninety.
So we would get July first, we would get our chapter ninety of law in the end of the year, which would have been two seventy-five. But if this legis, it goes through legislation, it would be. this legis it goes through legislation, it would be four fifty-nine.
Four fifty, four fifty-nine, yep.
And does does that does that bump come because of the additional money that we put towards it or just no, this is additional, she proposed the bill for additional $1.5 million pumped into chapter ninety. So our share of this year would be four fifty-nine.
Yeah, if if folks remember, there was the surcharge, the surtax, the the additional tax on annual incomes above a million dollars. And a certain slice of that has to be directed towards transportation and education. And this is part of that additional this and the and the T. But that and some bonding got our chapter ninety number up quite a bit.
So given the education, we should win the summer.
Yeah. If you get a news movement the day after Christmas, I think he probably is coming back Thursday, actually, this week to do the training with the guys, to walk the machine with them. So you'll see it on the next few weeks. Getting into our budget, I hope you're we've all got this memo that was sent out. Most of our budgets are going to remain the same, but I've kind of highlighted these three these three items that we're looking for changes in these items. The first one telephone that we're asking for an increase of a thousand dollars. And that is to facilitate the wireless capabilities of an iPad, a tablet and a laptop, which would be able to utilize our new asset management software, which I touched on earlier. That is up and running. Still working on getting all of the information implemented into that so that we when we start to use it, everything's preloaded. But it is live at this time and we would be able to utilize those that software in the field.
Is there a reason we can't save the twenty plus thirty-five plus thirty-eight by just using the phone as a hotspot?
It's mine. So it's this. This is for the guys. They have the laptop and the tablet. This is my personal.
Okay, so they don't have a cell phone as well. They just have these individuals.
We we pay, we pay the individuals a monthly amount for carrying their personal phones for various on-call and work-related things.
So if we're already subsidizing their cell phones, is there any reason why we can't expect them to utilize hotspot capabilities?
We don't determine, we don't say you need to have a certain sort of plan. It I guess, no, nothing does prevent us from doing that. That's not how it's been currently executed. The payment has also been compensation for their kind of on-call nature of it. So I think we would likely have to impact bargain that, but it's something we can explore if you want to.
Well, even just the exercise, Jeremy, you can see if providing phones with hotspot capabilities is actually more and more cost effective than yeah, some of this stuff. Maybe I could see if I'm going to.
Or even provide them like the little yeah, hotspot, you know, little units.
Yeah, because I mean, I.
All of these individual items don't need cell service.
Right.
So I I would. I'm not in the field with these guys. If I was doing the data input that we're expecting them to do on the work order sort of scheduling things, I wouldn't want to do that on an iPhone screen. I think there is some added usability to having a tablet versus expecting folks to use their phones for it.
Oh, great. That's not what I've been saying in any way, shape or form. I'm saying that there are plenty of ways a singular cellular device to be able to provide connectivity. Yeah, connectivity on any size screen. So like at hockey, right? When I'm in a parking lot, I use my cellphone as a hotspot for my work laptop, right? If they have a cellphone on them already and we're subsidizing their plan, I don't see any reason why we couldn't expect them to simply turn on those that hotspot capability for the phone that they have that we've subsidized and paying for or even subsidizing even a little bit further that doesn't require individual plans for all of the that's going to have to. Sure. And maybe that's something that we do next fiscal year as a cost factor measure, if that's the way that it has to go down. But I would like to understand, is that a way for us to do this in a more cost-effective manner? Well, yeah, I mean, similar, I look at why iPad, why tablet, why laptop? Why don't we have a consistent device that you use? Because if there's different costs for these three different less than. Okay.
That is the one that's at my desk. It has wireless capability for me to work in the field as needed.
Yeah.
The reason I have an iPad and a tablet is because the guys down there are split iOS and Android operating systems and two of the guys would rather use Android and two of the guys would rather use iPads.
Okay, that's all right.
There's a simple reason behind why there's one of each.
Yep.
They're cheaper. I don't understand why they're cheaper. The the we had the iPad first and one of the individuals is never having a tough time using it because he never used iOS. And the tablet, he's like, oh, this is great. I know what we're doing.
My God.
But there are cheap ways to be able to, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I I right, like the the personal hotspot, like I don't know what there would be any sort of discount from getting multiple hotspot devices.
Yeah, I mean, I I can envision a little hotspots, but I think they're only like fifteen dollars a month or or something like that.
And then and then there would be the flexibility that if something happened with any of these devices, you could still use the hotspot.
Yeah, they are. They would be department hotspots. They can be deployed to anybody who needs them for any other purpose.
It would. It wouldn't be device specific.
Yeah. So but would we agree this might be an era of exploration, given that it's really a small increase in the budget?
Uh, yeah.
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 Second would be maintenance. As we know, cost of everything gone, including our equipment made us funded for the past five years, it's been $25,000. But the cost to repair things has gone up specifically. Diesel exhaust fluid systems, they are horrible. They are meant to run on a highway at high rates of speed and we don't put that type usage on our trucks. We've replaced three DEF systems in our trucks in the past two years. And the largest cost for one of those was nineteen thousand dollars. And twenty-five thousand.
That's what I do for work.
The second part of that would be and we've gotten better. We have been doing great with getting new equipment, but we still have some outdated equipment and an example for that would be our motor in our back. They are twenty years old. They both went down three weeks apart from each other in October and that was nineteen thousand dollars repairs for both of them. Together, not each. But that's a huge hit towards twenty-five thousand.
What what's the longer term solution for this DEF issue?
Present. Dealers, I tried adding additives to our fuel to to. We have one truck that has to go into regeneration. When I say talked about the high speeds, that is what regenerating.
And these are your plots, right? These are the big things, right?
Big trucks. That running them on a highway for forty-five minutes at seventy-five miles an hour is going to regenerate your exhaust filters. So they don't regenerate. We're not doing that to get plugged up and destroy the system. The trucks, we have one truck that prompt you to put it into regeneration mode and it's the truck you see driving around the F five fifty to every two weeks, we have to put it down for forty-five minutes so it can regenerate.
So you're not you're not going to pass a regender.
No.
So your drive cycle just isn't.
I mean, that's it.
I'm learning.
So and those are just a couple of the things. Overall, the cost for everything has gone up. So I'm asking for an increase in our equipment made it made this budget two fifty thousand dollars. Is that going to cover it? Depends on the year, depends on what happens. It's unforeseen. But I am comfortable with moving money around and taking money from our road materials budget and moving it to equipment maintenance. Being almost twenty thousand. So when you look at equipment maintenance, we're actually asking for a five thousand dollar increase. And we take the money from road materials and to that.
So that make us less less flexible in other ways?
Some of these line items are weather dependent. Materials are weather dependent. If we have a lot of washouts, we have a lot of rainstorms, we're buying more material from Kimball's. Depending on the weather that we have in the winter will determine the pot will season. That's where we take all of our pot patch money from. So it's all weather dependent, but I have the numbers from years from that particular road materials for the past five years and ending bounds, twenty-one was four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Twenty-two was two thousand dollars. Twenty-three was twenty-eight thousand. Twenty-four was nineteen thousand. And right now we're sitting at fifty-five thousand dollars in that one.
A quick caveat to that, we moved some line painting stuff off of off of that, which we typically do there.
That was that that was hired equipment.
Hired equipment. Okay. Thank you. Shouldn't have interjected then. But what when you talk about flexibility, Brendan, just I've said this before, but the way we vote the budget does provide department heads with flexibility. So you're here, John, and some other folks say, you know, this account's been in deficit for X amount of years. And the reason that's kind of allowable, so to speak, is that we have other object codes in surplus within the same department. So this sort of move is right sizing the budget to be able to provide that level level service. But, you know, showing it and reporting it in a way that makes more sense.
Thank you for that. Yeah, makes sense. The group of materials type of expense, that's something that because it is weather dependent, if we're budgeting for maybe best case scenario, we're covering something and then things like income reserves could be used to.
That was a discussion I I've had in that. If we shortchange ourselves by taking that twenty thousand road materials and it's an emergency situation, there's other funding to get that material.
Yeah.
But looking at what we've what we've had for the past couple of years, I'm comfortable with the twenty thousand. Coming out of that. See, I'm looking for worst case scenario and everything I've read. So we're I'm asking for a five thousand dollar increase. The third one would be stormwater. Our current budget sits at forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. We should be that goes to I want to manage our business for everything that it comes. I'm asking for an increase to seventy-five thousand because I would like to move catch based cleaning out of hired equipment and put it in stormwater where it belongs. I've talked to other towns and they're like, what, what do you mean you're paying your store, your catch based cleaning out of hired equipment? That should be greater than your stormwater budget. I'm asking for an increase there. Can we also cover this? Catch basically putting out of hired equipment, it should have been paid us all, which I just said. Higher equipment would remain the same because we do have the new asset management software, which in FY twenty-six is going to be the sixteen thousand eight hundred dollar cost. And we have a maintenance contract that we need to keep up every year with paid management at five thousand. So I'm asking for it. I'm not. There would be no decrease in the funding in the higher. So it's a it's a significant ask to set seventy-five thousand. So.
Was the store. So there's more in hired equipment, say, in this current year than just your catch based cleaning, right?
Correct. We use that for line painting.
Right. So I just want to point out, you're asking for a thirty-one increase in your stormwater, which makes sense. And you're you're leaving hired equipment alone, but you're you're tallying it up with twenty-one, two or twenty twenty-two and but there's more there. I want people to know there's more there. So that's why there's thirty-one versus twenty-two. Additional things coming out of hired equipment. I would ask the question, if new asset management software, that line item belongs in hired equipment or do we have a software or technical line item that we would put it in, Jeremy?
Yeah, I was I was nodding as I knew where you were going. Yeah, that's a good question. We we probably have a subscriptions or a software maintenance line that we'd we'd like it in instead. But the gross dollar value will stay the same. So the the ask remains the same and just how we massage it might be a little bit different.
Yeah, I just want to point out, I I don't see it necessarily an increase in term, it it's only an increase year over year because we now have we procured software last year. We have the pavement management study maintenance process, which we talked about previously, need to be incorporated with the budget. So it's not a a net new ask. It's just, these are things we sort of started a year ago. And we're continuing. So it's the first time we're seeing them at all. Unless I have that wrong, somebody tell me if that's how I see it.
Yeah, there's thirty, there's thirty thousand dollars in new money in one line. But there's twenty, like you said, two thousand dollars new in the other line. So we're seeing some fractional increases on contractual increases. There's some expected supply increases that we don't have. You know, we don't quite know the percentage, we don't quite know the quantity. So based on other experiences, it's kind of rolled in here. So there is some estimation involved in it, but really, yeah, we we twenty-two thousand of the thirty thousand is delineated right there.
I but I guess my my bigger point is I don't hear John asking us for for new things. This is a continuation of what we already thought was a good idea to implement a year ago. Yeah. And this is just now annual cost that's going to reoccur in future budgets as well. Which we were fully aware of. Right. That would be the key.
Asking for what we expected to have.
Yes. Really good at like becoming more succinct once we start talking. You can really narrow these things down into very. Power. By the time we get to the end of it, we've got six words.
And Jeremy, we we talked about this, so nice. And so I can say right now we are ninety-five thousand dollars debt in deficit for salt this year. We haven't had big storms, but I would rather big storms. They're easier to do. Same as I seen in the rose two or three times because it's ice and it's and then just know that you can't pile off and you have to salt it off. That's where we're at with with the salt budget and we are four thousand one eighteen dollars in red in hired equipment. That is our contract. It's not close.
How much do you get for that?
Four thousand eighty.
Much salt we have on hand now?
The shed is full.
Okay. So. But but I think it's it's good to point out that we may be in the red, but we're also for next year. Right.
Yeah. And that's typically that's what happens. Like this year we came into was full shed. But there was discussion about whether we increase. I know Jeremy and I talked about whether we increase our salt budget. I know we talked about it last year as well. I'm fine with being aware of this, but.
Well, looking at the last five years, I mean, this is what the the biggest impact in the last couple of years.
Yeah, this is, yes. It's big for the year before.
Yeah, I mean, I I like the idea of within the past five years, it's sort of a gauge and plan on deficit. I would probably deficit spending. I don't.
Yeah, so this this is what this is what John was was talking about here. The bottom half of this report, Department four twenty-three. So you see on the bottom right there, the total deficit in the four twenty-three account right now is seventy-one thousand two thirteen. So that's what we'll have to fund either with free cash or on next year's levy, likely with with free cashes. Current existing free cash.
Oh, and that that's like, I see it's a netted number, Jeremy, because I see John's ninety-five and four, but then you've got some.
So that's taking into account all everything else.
Yeah. So I was thinking it's a hundred. Seventy-one's a better number than a hundred. You know, I like that smaller number.
So, yeah, I I think I'm not sure how much discussion these committees have had on snow and ice. But you have to, from an MGL standpoint, have to budget at least as much as you budgeted last year to give yourself the ability to deficit spend. So I don't think the conversation will ever be, you know, if we have a few mild winters, do we want to cut it? Because that impacts your flexibility for future years and deficit spending. But if we are, if we, you know, have a lived experience like this again next year, perhaps we need to look at this salt budget. But I think. Um, but I think with that rolling five-year, we can call this an anomaly and see what happens, um, given that we do have that flexibility.
Yeah. Do you have a recommendation, Jeremy, and whether or not we, uh, put a placeholder out there for free cash to pay this down or to use raising the levy?
So I would prefer a free cash, um, because. So it is a regular and recurring expense, but it has, in that we're going to do snow and ice removal every year. Um, but this, like John has said, was kind of a spike in terms of what was, we've recently experienced. Um, so that's more one-time in nature. Um, so using free cash for this small amount, um, more than comfortable with. Um, and whether, again, whether you use a FinCom reserve, uh, because it's available or use free cash, it all ends up being the same thing. Because whatever you don't spend in either of those things will fall through to free cash this coming fall. Um, so it's different pocket.
Now?
Say that again.
What is our free cash right now?
Um, I just pinged the accountant because I can't read the way they set up, um, our report, but yeah, it's just shy of three thou, three hundred thousand, I believe.
Thank you.
This, that deficit doesn't look big to me, honestly. I mean, I'm not sure this is much of an anomaly, is it really? Cause I thought we kind of gone into, you know, hundreds before. So I, that, that number doesn't scream at me as a bad thing, that's a good thing. Well, yeah, relative to speaking. Yeah. It, but, but that's what we.
These types of things, that type of, uh, that amount of money is not.
No, but, but that's also. This is the best, these are the most flexibility from a budgeting standpoint. I don't want to raise the number because I'm gonna be locked in at a higher rate. You know what I mean? So I think.
There is zero data that tells us we should continue. Continue.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, and I agree with that assessment because there is like a reasonability test that you pass with having a hundred and ninety-four thousand, um. Previous community, uh, my previous community in Attleboro had something like a seventy-nine thousand or ninety-one thousand dollar budget that we just were in deficit with kind of by November. Um, which doesn't pass reasonability, but I think this is a, a sensible estimate for the community.
So that, that action there will be voted on in town meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, so, so I will ask the Highway Surveyor, um, in the next coming weeks when we can, um, close the, close the snow and ice removal program. Um, and that'll be a kind of a moving target, but we'll have a, um, uh, you know, we might get a ice storm, you know, in, in March at some point. Uh, but there'll be a placeholder on the ATM warrant, um, for funding this with free cash.
What's happening, do you mind that? Close the spending, things like the table for, well, we're good. Shit. Yeah, shit, yeah. I mean, you're gonna need. Yeah, and it's very good for that.
Yeah, i- and if, and if we blow, if we blow through it in terms of like wages, um, and then that's what we can use for FinCom reserves. Um, and then we have two weeks after the fiscal year closes to make any transfers to, you know, close everything up. Um, so we would be able to, um, either fund it through other available resources, or we can then raise it on the rate in the fall and make a change to the budget.
And I would just say that forty-five eight forecast, I don't trust. It's gonna snow here, it's gonna snow there. I'm just looking at specifically for captures. We're looking mostly fifties and sixties through many, maybe some forties in there, but I'm not seeing anything.
Yeah, totally. I'm not at all.
So was there anything else with, uh, snow and ice or with highway?
I don't believe so unless there's any questions.
Anybody online from finance committee, any further questions?
Good here, thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good, thanks. John, thank you.
So, alright, thank you. Alright, so Jeremy, do we have anything else related to budget for tonight?
Not for tonight, no.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close the pink hole? I'll make the read.
Uh, so, uh, yeah, we're all, we're almost, yeah, I think you could, yeah, there's nothing else on here that you need. I mean, our next meetings are Wednesday and then Tuesday.
Okay, we, uh, no more discussions today, right?
Not on the agenda.
Alright, can I get a motion to close the pink hole?
I'll make a motion. And Jack Hodgins, second.
Uh, any suggestions? Uh, was a favor? Roll call vote.
Uh, Ron Zamuto, aye.
Hodgins, aye.
Billy had that aye.
Jesse Carolla.
Your aye, we'll, we'll close at nine forty-five PM.
Also.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, we go sign?
Raleigh, aye.
Hooter, aye.
Yeah. Both mics at the same time. Both, yeah, as long as Katie heard. So, okay, great. This meeting is served at nine forty-six.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Yeah, battery's about to go.